All right, thank you. Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the June 2nd, 2020 meeting of the Edina City Council. It is a virtual meeting. And there are a few things that we need to cover from a script standpoint, both before the meeting starts, before we start community comment, and before we start the public hearing matters. So again, I say, welcome to the June 2nd meeting of the Edina City Council. This meeting is being held electronically in compliance with the governor's safer-at-home order. Ensure the safety of all residents and staff, all members of the city council staff and presenters are participating from their homes or offices. Before we begin, there are a few things we need to cover for those listening in and hoping to participate in certain portions of the meeting. First of all, I just want to say that the city is committed to continuing to receive and hear your input on matters. We've been collecting public input through our council correspondence, web form, voicemail, and our engagement website, BetterTogetherEdina.org. It is important you know that all comments that have been submitted have been received and read prior to the start of this meeting. You do not need to submit the same feedback in another way. All feedback is considered equally regardless of the way in which it was submitted. Tonight, there will be two times to call in to provide comment via phone. The first opportunity is the community comment portion of the agenda. You are allowed to speak about anything that is not on tonight's agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing during community comment. The second opportunity to speak is the public hearing portion of the process on our agenda this evening. And there is a matter there on the vacation of Oak Lane, the potential vacation of Oak Lane, I should say, and Garden Avenue, and a variance appeal for a cellular antenna tower in the Highland Park neighborhood. If you want to call in for a community comment or to provide testimony for the public hearing, call 800-374-0221. That's 800-374-0221. Your conference ID number is 977-2119. 977-2119. Then you need to press star one, or star one, to indicate you'd like to speak, and you'll be placed in the speaking queue. You'll be given three minutes to speak when your opportunity arises. City Manager Scott Neal will time the speakers, and he'll let you know if you go over the three-minute mark, and then we'll ask you to wrap up your comments. Remember, again, you don't need to call in if you've already provided feedback, but you're certainly welcome to do so. Also, to the extent you can avoid redundancy and repeating information already presented, or if you had, please, if you can avoid that, we'd appreciate that. And make sure you call in, though, if you have new comments or information that you want to bring forward to the council. Make sure residents have an opportunity to participate. We will not act on the vacation or variance appeal tonight. The public hearing on that matter, actually, both matters will remain open until noon Wednesday, June 10th. So those public hearings will remain open until Wednesday, June 10th, for supplemental testimony. You can do that by voicemail with your feedback, or submit a comment online at BetterTogetherEdina.org. By leaving a voicemail, you can call the City of Edina website at 952-927-8861. So thanks in advance for your patience as we work to conduct this meeting online using different software types. We've got almost 20 people participating from their own homes to make this possible. We hope there will not be any issues, but be assured that we'll do our best to continue the meeting if we do have any technological issues, technological issues, excuse me. So having said that, we are going to call the meeting to order, and I'll ask Ms. Allison to do a roll call. Roll call, please, Ms. Allison.
Member Anderson?
Here.
Member Brindle?
Here.
Member Fisher?
Here.
Member Staunton?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here.
The next matter on the agenda before we approve a meeting agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I think my speaker is on. There'll be a flag on the screen. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Is there anyone on the council or anyone from staff that wishes to modify the agenda in any form? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as produced.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Member Fisher, second by Member Anderson, to approve the meeting agenda as shown. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye.
The meeting agenda is approved. I mentioned earlier that we had three different opportunities to visit with residents and tell them how they can participate in the meeting. I did that before I opened the meeting, and this is now the second opportunity before we proceed into community comment. So we will now give residents the opportunity to speak about something that is not on tonight's agenda or scheduled for a future public meeting. Again, remember to participate in community comment. You can call in now at 1-800-374-0221. The conference ID number is 977-2119. It should be a matter that is not on the agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. Press star one to indicate you'd like to speak. You'll be put in the queue, and you'll be given three minutes to speak. Director Bennerott, do we have anybody that wishes to speak during the community comment portion of the agenda?
We currently have seven people on the call, but none have indicated that they would like to participate in community comment. Again, if you would like to speak to the council during community comment, please press star one on your telephone keypad to get in the queue. Otherwise, council, I would recommend you stay on the line for a minute or so in case other callers choose to call in.
All right, thank you, Director Bennerott. We know that there is a slight delay with the broadcast, so we'll wait a few more minutes before moving on to the next item on the agenda, in case anyone else on the line wants to speak or someone else calls in. All right, I think we'll move on now from community comment. Typically, following community comment, we have the city manager's response to community comments that were made two weeks before, but Manager Neal, I don't think there were any community comments that were made two weeks ago.
There were none. We're on a real cold streak there.
Okay. Then let's move on to the adoption of the consent agenda. There are 10 items on the consent agenda. Does anyone on the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? All right, hearing nothing, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as shown?
So moved.
Or second?
Second.
Is that Member Fisher?
Staunton.
Thank you. Motion by Member Brindle, second by Member Fisher with respect to adopting the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Ms. Allison.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
The consent agenda items are approved in their totality. We are next going to move on to the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda. And we have one proclamation this evening, and I see our recent equity coordinator Heidi Lee is on the line. And Ms. Lee, I know you're poised to accept a proclamation should it be adopted. Was there anything you wanted to say in advance of the council or having me read the proclamation?
One thing to just point out is that with this particular proclamation, the city of Richfield, as well as the city of Bloomington, have also adopted this proclamation as a sign of partnership and community to really think about the racial disparities that have been exposed or illuminated due to COVID-19.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Lee. That's helpful. All right, so the proclamation is passed, it reads as follows, and the title on it is "Centering Equity in the City's Response to the COVID-19 Pandemic." And the proclamation reads as follows, "Whereas the City of Edina is committed to acting courageously to advance equity and create a vibrant, safe, and healthy community where people of all races thrive. And whereas emerging COVID-19 infection and mortality data illuminates a disturbing disproportionate impact on Black, Indigenous, and people of color, most specifically African-American communities. Whereas Black, Indigenous, people of color, undocumented Minnesotans, people with disabilities are more likely to be low-wage, essential frontline workers such as service workers and health care workers, and thus at higher risk of exposure and are disproportionately burdened by the virus and its impacts. Whereas the state of Minnesota has recently seen a rise in reports of discrimination towards the Asian-American community. And whereas we recognize the unequal allocation of power and resources as a root cause of racial and other health inequities. And whereas our city commits to lifting up the health and social needs of the most marginalized members of our communities, ensuring examples of how centering their needs can ensure that we are all safe and healthy. And whereas our city is committed to providing targeted education and resource information to communities of color, immigrants, and refugees who are realizing significant adverse health and socioeconomic impacts. And whereas our city commits to standing in solidarity against xenophobic and racist attacks on Asian-Americans. And whereas our city will work side by side with community partners to identify and address ways that this infection may exacerbate existing inequities in our communities and how we can reduce those inequities. And whereas this moment is an opportunity for our city and community to better understand how we are all impacted when some of us lack the unequal access to resources, health, and opportunities. Now therefore, I, James B. Hovland, Mayor of Edina, do proclaim that the City of Edina commits to centering equity in our community's response to the COVID-19 global pandemic in partnership with surrounding cities such as our contiguous neighbors Bloomington and Richfield. Is there a motion to adopt the proclamation as stated?
So moved.
Second. Get a motion by Member Brindle, second by Member Anderson. Any further discussion with regard to the proclamation, centering equity in the city's response to the COVID-19 pandemic? Roll call, please.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye.
Proclamation is approved. Thank you. Next, we're going to move on to the public hearing portion of the agenda and the...
I just, thank you, Heidi.
Oh, yes, thank you, Ms. Lee. Is there anything you'd want to say on a follow-up basis?
Yes, yes, if I could, I would appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor Hovland and City Council. I appreciate you for affirming the city's commitment to center the race and equity in response to COVID-19 global pandemic. This is a unified proclamation with Bloomington and Richfield. COVID-19 has impacted many people through the globe, nation, and our state of Minnesota. This global pandemic has shown the resiliency and adaptations that Minnesota and its communities are willing to make to keep community members safe. It shows that what the cities and communities can do when they work together. While COVID-19 has had positive impacts, it has also eliminated the disproportionals on the Black, Indigenous, people of color, or the BIPOC community. The Minnesota Department of Health provides a daily situation update of COVID-19, which data includes disaggregated by race and ethnicity. And while Black people account for 6.8% of the Minnesota population, according to the Census Bureau, Black people account for 22.4% of the total COVID cases that have been confirmed. And Hispanic and Latinx people account for 5.5% of the Minnesota population, however, 20% of the total confirmed cases. And so while the state shows that there's disparities on who has contracted COVID-19, it's also important to understand what is happening in the community. And so in an effort to understand the basic needs of Edina residents, a community impact survey was distributed to residents through Better Together for available April 27 through May 8. And so of that community impact survey, 1,769 responses were received, which is a total of 3.4% of the city's population. And so the survey asked resident demographic indicators such as household information, like aid rages within the household, do they own or rent their home, as well as their race and ethnicity. And so of that, 1,649 respondents chose to indicate their racial and ethnic identity. And so the survey asked also whether they were getting their COVID, where they were getting their COVID information, what their future and immediate household needs were due to COVID, and additional concerns. And so I just want to be able to provide kind of the context of that. And so understanding that the, understanding that the survey is not statistically valid since all participants had the opportunity to choose or answer questions, and not everyone in the community participated. However, residents were asked to indicate which basic needs they were concerned about accessing immediately or in the near future, such as cleaning products and toiletries, food for household, medication, medical care, helping children with schoolwork, mental or emotional support, internet access, computer, laptop, or tablet access, childcare, housing, and transportation, and lastly, work. And so within those 12 categories, there was, there were several gaps in relation to the BIPOC community and the white community. For example, 20% of the total respondents indicated that they were concerned about work. However, Black, Asian, and American Indian, Native Alaskan, Hispanic, and Latinx, as well as two or more races, indicated respectively that at 35%, 37%, 33%, 28%, and 30% were concerned about work due to COVID. And so while the results from the community impact survey is important, a counter narrative could be created with the remaining 96.6 of the community that we did not hear from. And so in addition to the racial disparities, the noticeable disparities also include households who are renting, have youth, are seniors, and those vulnerable to COVID. And so with that proclamation, you did indicate other points that to center race and equity. And so the future of COVID is not clear, and the pandemic has impacted the globe in our ways of being. And so this has provided the city opportunities on how to center race and equity. And so some of the examples in our response and our continued response is a resource hotline that was set up through Public Health for community members to call and get assistance. Parks and Rec have started signs or incorporated Spanish and Somali signs and QR codes for translation. COVID handouts have also been translated in Spanish and Somali, as well as the city website and Better Together have COVID resources, as well as a bias and discrimination form that is available both on the city website and Better Together. And so with that, the city's reaffirmation of to center race and equity is not just a response to the global pandemic, but how the city will center equity work in our future and current work in our departments. And so from my perspective, race and equity work is continuous. So I thank you for reaffirming the city's journey on this equity work.
Yeah, that was some fascinating information. I'm wondering if you've got it, well, I know you have it reduced to a written form for yourself, but if you could share that data with the council a little bit more broadly, and then also just, I think your personal observations on sort of those overarching observations would be helpful as well to all of us, and I think if we contemplate how to deal with this COVID-19 dilemma in our, our community. So thank you so much for that update. Questions or comments related to the information provided by Ms. Lee? Anyone have any questions?
Just to thank you.
Yeah, it's some really good work. I was really pleased, and were you pleased with the level of response to the survey?
I was, and I also think of other ways to be able to engage the remaining 96.6 that did not have that opportunity, really thinking about that there are potential gaps, and so how to engage those folks that we might have missed.
That prompt any further thoughts or observations by council members? Okay, good. Ms. Lee, thanks so much for being with us this evening and for bringing this information forward and the proclamation as well. We're closely tied to our neighbors to the east and the south, and we really, this is another good way to solidify that relationship and work together. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Yeah, thank you, Director Heidi Lee. So we're going to move on now to the public hearing portion of the agenda, and we've got two public hearing matters in front of us this evening, and Director Milner has the first matter.
Next, Mayor, members of the council.
That deals with the Resolution 2020-57, which was a request to approve a street right-of-way easement vacation at Oak Lane and Garden Avenue. And again, for those folks that might be listening in, you'll have an opportunity, opportunity to testify this evening, but the matter on motion when we conclude the call-in testimony, this is going to be left open until noon on June 10th, and then it will be taken up at the June 16th council meeting for determination. So Director Milner, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Sharing my screen right now, she still have the PowerPoint slides to consider tonight with Resolution 2020-57. Just like the mayor had mentioned, we want to present the information tonight and then have your decision at the next council meeting on June 16th. So there was an application received. These were the properties that signed the application that were highlighted. The area that's being considered tonight is between Garden Avenue and Oak Lane. So it's this Oak Lane right-of-way between those two segments. You can see it here, it's the hatch pattern labeled Oak Lane going from the Oak Lane cul-de-sac over to the Garden Avenue. In your packets tonight, there was an individual that owns these two properties, plus two additional ones along here, this one here, this one, and these two. That is against this vacation. I just want to make you aware of that correspondence that you already received. This just shows a little aerial view of the area in question. The arrow is pointing to Outlet A, which has been discussed at length with a potential residential redevelopment there or development. It shows the seven properties that would be affected by the vacation. So each color is a separate property that would be considered associated with the vacation. So I learned later this afternoon that there's actually two options. What I was requesting isn't quite correct, according to the city attorney. So we're gonna, there's two options going forward. We could either vacate the entire right-of-way that I showed in those colored graphics except for a certain portion, because the goal of this vacation is to vacate street rights. We want to make sure that we keep trailway, sidewalk, and the drainage and utility easements through this corridor. So one way we could do that is vacating the 25 feet all the way through, or not all the way through, but we vacate maybe 10 feet and keep 15 feet through that corridor. So it's not wide enough to build a street, but we can still do those other things that I mentioned. Or the second option is we vacate the entire thing and make it contingent, and getting new easement documents from each owner for the sidewalk, trailway, drainage, and utility purposes to be used for future things. So there's two options. We can vacate the whole thing and ask for easements from adjacent owners, or we can only vacate a portion of this area, then have the rights to the rest of it. So by the time we have the next meeting, I'll have that clarified on which avenue we want to go. But the goal definitely is to not allow a future street to be built through that corridor. One of those two options, we'll come back with on June 16th. We want to retain or create those other easements for sidewalks, trails, drainage, and utilities. There is an option for residents to submit comments, you know, either tonight over the phone, or there is a Better Together Edina webpage that comments can be submitted until June 10th. Then at that, June 16th, we'll bring a Resolution 2020-57 with some updated language based on those two options. So with that, I'll stand for any questions from the council.
Are there any questions for Director Milner with respect to his presentation or either of the potential options?
I have one, Your Honor.
Yes, Member Staunton?
I'm just trying to clarify which parcels are owned by the party that has filed an objection. It looks to me like the Songsteds own 5420, 5424, and 5500, and then also own 5520, I guess.
That is correct. It's in the Songstead family, but there's a name, the owner name for these three are the same. There's a different individual Songstead name for this 5520.
Okay.
Assuming it's all in the same family.
Right, okay, thank you.
So I have a question.
Yes, Member Fisher.
So the two parcels over in the, it'll be 5420, 5424, I believe, or actually, all four of them that are in question, would they all have access, they all have access from Benton, correct?
Correct. They all have current access.
We're not removing access from any, any properties.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Would you leave that map up, please? If, if there were a request by the various members of this family to subdivide and create lots to the north of those existing lots, is there room, is there, is there a house at 5420 right now?
Yes.
So, okay.
So our community development director, Carrie T., looked at if they wanted to subdivide these lots, whether or not they would need variances. And I see Carrie's come online, but according to Carrie, they would need to come to the city council for variances to do any sort of subdivision here. So there would be another council action if that ever came to be.
What types of variances would be required, Director T.?
So as you know, our minimum lot area width and depth is established by the median of all properties within 500 feet. So we didn't run those calculations from the Songstead properties. However, with the subdivision of the outlot just to the north of this right-of-way that Mr. Elliott was proposing, we do know the medians from that lot, so they're generally the same. So if we use those medians, the median lot area is just under 13,000 square feet, 82 feet in width, and 190 feet deep. Trying to subdivide the Songstead parcels, it looks as though they would likely need some variances for lot area, width, and depth. We would have to run those medians to know for sure, but I think it's, it's pretty safe to say that some variances would be needed. What they could do, even if the property is, if the right-of-way is vacated, the three properties that the Songsteds own to the east, they would still have access off of Garden. They might be able to combine, you know, using all three of those parcels, combining to create one lot that may meet our standards. Lots on Benton might need variances for depth. It's hard to know precisely, but there may be some opportunities still to develop the three Songstead properties to the east.
That was my next question, was they could still theoretically get access from Garden, is that what you're saying?
They could. They would have about, about 40 feet of frontage onto Garden with the vacation. That little portion, the 5424 and 5420, that land would go back to the Songsteds?
The 5424 and 5420, that land would go back to the Songsteds. And so that little portion there at 5420, it's about 40 feet wide, they would have access to Garden.
Chad, can you go back one slide?
Yep.
Is this designed to identify the parcels that are part of the petition?
Correct. These are the, the individuals or the property owners that signed the application or petition to vacate.
So I, I'm looking at the petition that's in our packet, and it looks like the owners of 5504 Benton, 5506 Benton, and 5516 Benton are also petitioners.
I can look back at that. They might, if it's in that petition, I could look at the, the list and the signatures and, and look at that.
Yeah, Jay, I just want to make sure we're, because as it's graphically represented, it kind of looks heavily tilted towards the north. And it looks like there are several property owners on the south who are also in favor of the petition.
I think you're correct. I think my graphic is, is not right or not updated. So I can bring that back at the next council meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for that question, Member Stotan. Other questions for Director Milner or Director Teague at this point in time? Are the applicants available?
No, they weren't, they weren't unless they're on the phone to, to speak to it. We weren't, as typical with our vacations, we just present the information.
All right, so we'll just open this up then for public testimony for anyone that wishes to speak for or against the matter. The public hearing is now open, and let me look at my script here before we open it up. Just so folks have good notice on how they can provide testimony in this matter. You can call in now at 1-800-374-0221. A reminder again, the conference ID number, if you didn't write it down before, is 977-2119. An operator will ask for your name and street address. Press star 1 to indicate you'd like to speak. You'll be placed in the queue. And then you'll be introduced when it's your turn to speak. You'll be given three minutes to speak, and then City Manager Scott Neal will let you know when your three minutes are complete. And then we'll have you wrap up your comments. And then also remember, it's not necessary for you to call in, or if you do call in, you can still submit supplemental statements via voicemail at the city, 952-927-8861, through the switchboard, or at our website, bettertogetheredina.org. And we'll continue to take testimony via the voicemail box and the bettertogetheredina.org website until noon on June 10th. Director Bennerott, do we have anybody in the queue that wishes to testify?
We still have about eight people on the call, but none have indicated that they would like to testify in this matter. Again, if you would like to speak to the council, please press star 1 on your keypad to let us know that you'd like to speak. Otherwise, council, I would recommend that we sit tight for a minute or so in case other new callers want to join in.
All right. Director Bennerott, would you also advise folks as to the consequence of getting off of that line and being able to hear the rest of the council meeting? There's a different mechanism for doing that, I believe, they should know about.
Sure. At the end of the public hearings, the inter-call will end. You can watch live on Facebook Live. Our page is edinamn. You can also watch through the city's website at edinamn.gov, or of course, Edina TV on Comcast Channels 813 and 16.
All right, good, thank you. Is there anyone that is in the queue to testify?
No, sir, not yet.
All right, we'll hold on.
Mayor, this is, this is Chad, Director Milner. I got a little update for Kevin, Councilmember Stotan. There were four properties on Benton Avenue that signed the petition. So one I had highlighted. There's three additional in that list of properties on Benton Avenue.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Director Milner. Could you give us those addresses of the people that were in favor of the vacation that reside on Benton?
Yes, Mayor, it's 5524, 5516, 5506, 5504.
All right, very good, thank you. Director Bennerott, anyone coming online to testify?
No, sir.
Ms. Bennerott, I am, I just received a text message from somebody who is in line and wants to testify. And the star 1 feature doesn't seem to be working right now.
What are the last four digits of that person's phone number?
0937.
Enrico, could you please unmute the line ending with 0937?
Great, can you hear me all right?
We can hear you, yes.
Excellent. Mayor Hovland, city council members and city staff. My name is Steve House. Good to see you all virtually. I'm speaking in favor of the proposed vacation of the right-of-way between Oak and Garden on behalf of several members of our neighborhood. We've worked together as a neighborhood and are happy to report strong participation of neighbors who live on Benton, Johnson, Grove, Oak and Garden. As you know, these are the streets and cul-de-sacs with homes that touch the right-of-way. First of all, we'd like to express our appreciation for your willingness to patiently listen to all of our concerns and ideas over the past six-plus months, for your encouragement to us to work to try and find a positive solution. This step to vacate the right-of-way is the final step in an interconnected set of actions. It will result in an outcome that provides tangible progress for the city's long-term plans to achieve four goals: protecting natural wetland areas, taking steps to limit the impact of global warming, aiding in the management of stormwater runoff, and limiting additional residential density in the city, areas aligned with the long-term plan. In addition to achieving these higher-level outcomes, we believe this action to vacate the right-of-way would preserve the character of the neighborhood and protect the interest of the property owners adjacent to the right-of-way. This is evidenced by the fact that two of the Benton Avenue lots have been redeveloped in the last few years. These large lots with backyards facing the natural area associated with the wetland and heavily wooded right-of-way area are highly valued. Finally, we would stress that vacation of the right-of-way is aligned with the other steps solidified over the past few weeks to assure that the one property owner who would have required access to the right-of-way to develop their property has been fairly compensated. The city's purchase of this land and the willingness of neighbors in the area to be voluntarily assessed has shown what can be accomplished when working together towards larger goals. This outlot will be conserved for the long term and is a critical part of the larger natural area that includes the wetland and the wooded areas associated with the right-of-way. Thanks very much, and we strongly support a vote in favor of vacating the right-of-way. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. House. Are you getting any more texts? Manager Neal, this is our new modified system. They text you. Do you want to give out your cellphone number?
No, thank you, I do not, but I'm not receiving any more text messages.
People can email me at jbennerott@edinamn.gov if they're having a hard time getting through. The operator assures me that star 1 is working, but I have received now two reports that it's not. Again, it's star 1, not pound 1, once you've connected. Okay, I have another caller on the line. Operator, will you please open the line that ends with 3877? And caller, please begin by stating your full name and address.
Am I on?
You are.
Oh, thank you. See, I apologize. I was trying to speak during the open public comment, not to this issue specifically. And I was coming to testify based on the reports on tobacco ordinance and seeing that it was not listed as a public hearing, not knowing if there's going to be a public hearing. I represent the coalition of neighborhood retailers who have stores in Edina. Yeah.
This is not a public hearing matter, and this is on the agenda this evening, so you are not allowed to speak on this matter.
Okay, are you guys going to have a public hearing on that?
That'll be a discussion we have when we get to that particular agenda item.
Okay, and, and the reason I bring it up is just because we know that there's been correspondence, and we just hadn't heard that any of those comments had been heard or considered. So that's why I was bringing it up at the time. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for your understanding. Okay.
Our next caller has a phone number that ends in 8989. Operator, will you please open that line ending with 8989? And caller, please begin with your full name and address.
From the line of 8989, your line is open.
Good evening.
That person hung up after hearing the last caller.
All right, okay, thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak, please press star 1 now. If you are having trouble getting through, the operator assures me it is working. Please be sure to press star 1 and not pound 1. Otherwise, feel free to send me an email at jbennerott@edinamn.gov.
Mr. Mayor, this is Director Milner. I did get one of the Songsteds just emailed and said that star 1 function is not working. That was the 8989 extension that just, it sounds like it left the queue.
I see that number in the queue again. We can have the operator open that line again.
All right, let's do that. Let's get the testimony of one of the Songstead folks on Benton.
Okay, the line is open. Caller, please go ahead by starting with your full name and address.
Sure, it's Melvin Songstead, 5424 Benton Avenue. Thanks for letting me at least put my two cents in here. And by the way, I am in favor of that. I think that's a great idea that that outlot is going to get saved on the west end. It was a difficult bill to say the least, bail the, that'll be a good thing for them for certain. And the, as far as the east goes, if you're, if you're telling me that 40-foot is going to work from Garden, and I'm going to be able to access the back of the lot, is that what you're telling me? The council?
Why don't you ask your question, Mr. Songstead, and then we'll gather all your questions, and then the staff will answer them later. But to the extent that you want to express any testimony regarding this proposed vacation, you should do that now. This is your chance.
All right, well, the idea is that the city of a long time ago thought it was a good idea to develop the back of the lot. And I would have needed a variance, right? I concur with Teague on that. It's just that giving up the vacancies or the, the right-of, vacating the right-of-way on 5808 Oak and 5451 Grove affect me, and they affect my ability to do it. They change it, and since it was designed to be a road in the beginning, that's my objection. Because I think you're vacating it for the greater, I think the greater good is a couple houses back there. And I wouldn't have done three. That wouldn't have crossed my mind. Two is what I was thinking about. So that's all I had to say, and thank you very much. Do you have any questions to me?
Okay, so if you, why don't you finish out your thought with respect to access off Garden too?
Yeah, I'd just say if, if the city's telling me that 40-foot would work there, then I'd like that, that that would work for me.
Okay.
So I would need something, I would need something, I need something from them. I would think Planning Department, Engineering, whoever's, whoever would be the one to sign off on that.
All right, we'll get an answer for that, to that question that you have there with regard to access, the 40-foot access that, I think it was at 5420 Benton. And we'll have that for you at the next hearing, which will be on the 16th of June.
Any chance I could get sooner than that, I'd appreciate it. That would, then I don't have to.
Sure, well, why don't you, why don't you be in contact with Director Teague? If you are ready, I'll give you the switchboard number, and you can call in and I'll direct you to Director Teague, and you can look at this issue in the interim, as to what you might potentially need for approvals by the council.
Then I will, I'll meet with, I'll meet with her, I should say, I will call him. I can do that certainly.
All right.
Okay, thanks very much for your time.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Mr. Songstead.
Our next caller has a phone number that ends with 1811. Operator, will you please unmute the line for 1811? And caller, please begin by stating your full name and address.
Good evening. My name's Rick Dale, and I live with my family at 5805 Oak Lane. And I am, I guess, the submitter of, or one of, along with Mr. House, Kelly House, of the application to vacate the right-of-way. Just a couple points. I understand Mr. Songstead's concerns. I would note that all of his properties on Benton still enjoy access to Benton. And Benton Avenue access for his properties affords him the opportunity to develop those properties in the same manner that we've seen 5512 and 5516 Benton develop. Those homes are, have taken advantage, as Mr. House mentioned, of the deep lots that the Benton Avenue properties enjoy. And so he still has that ability to develop those properties in the same manner we've seen along Benton. One final point, the ability to develop those properties in that manner may explain why in the 45 years since this street right-of-way has existed, there has not been a proposal from a Benton Avenue property owner for the use of the right-of-way. But obviously, Mr. Milner has some additional options to look at with respect to the vacation of the street right-of-way here. And we will follow up with him to discuss those and work through those options so that we can move this proposal forward with a staff recommendation, a positive recommendation to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bale.
Next caller's phone number ends with 5784. Operator, will you please open the line ending 5784? Caller, please begin by stating your full name and address.
Hello, my name is Dennis Zuzik, and I live at 5524 Benton Avenue. And I wanted to express my strong support of the right-of-way for all the reasons that Steve outlined earlier. And I wanted to just express that there are several neighbors on Benton, as has been discussed earlier, who have joined with our, our neighbors on Grove and Oak to petition for this. And we hope the city will follow through with this and so that we can complete the vacation and, and purchase the outlot. And so with that, that's the end of my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zuzik.
Hovland, I do not currently have anyone else in the queue. Again, a reminder to press star one if you would like to provide testimony to the council. That is the asterisk key, not the pound or hash mark. Otherwise, council, I would recommend that we sit tight for a few minutes in case we have anyone else join us.
All right. Thank you, Director Bennerott. Because of that delay in broadcast, we'll wait a few more minutes before moving on to the next item, or entertaining a motion in this case. Director Bennerott, why don't you let us know when you feel comfortable instructing the council to move forward with the next kind of action here?
You can move forward, council.
All right. Thank you, Director Bennerott. Just a reminder to folks who may have been on the phone and testified, or who were listening in, or watching the council meeting, or learn about it after the fact, we'll leave this matter open until noon, June 10th. The motion that comes up next, we'll deal with that. So let me request an action by council. Is there a motion to close the public hearing at noon on June 10th with regard to proposed Resolution 2020-57? Which will be coming to us in a modified form from Director Milner with a couple of options on easement vacation. And this all deals, of course, with a potential street right-of-way easement vacation at Oak Lane and Garden Avenue. The motion would continue, close the public hearing at noon on June 10th and continue the action item for disposition on June 16 at the city council meeting on that particular date.
So moved.
Your second. Motion by Member Brendel, second.
Second.
Second by Members, Members Staunton, or, yes. Further to second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing matter in this proceeding at noon on June 10th and continuing the action on the item to the June 16 city council meeting. Roll call, please.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brendel?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye.
Motion is approved. The public hearing will close at noon on June 10th, and the matter will be continued for action on the June 16 agenda of the city council.
And Mr. Mayor, I assume we'll get some clarity on this access off of Garden issue that was raised by Mr. Songstead.
Yes, good point, Members Staunton. That was my anticipation, was that not only would Mr. Songstead get some clarification on it, but I'm sure that both Director Milner and Director Teague will provide us with some information on that issue as well.
We will. We'll bring that back.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, is, just thinking procedurally, so we're keeping the public hearing open. Presumably, we're going to make a decision at the next council meeting. There are still some variables on the table, but because, as long as we stay sort of within the outline of those variables, I'm assuming then we will have taken public input, because we just have to be careful that we don't veer too far away, because then the public would not have had the chance to, to comment on anything that would have changed dramatically. Does that make sense?
It does. I know one of the recent public hearing matters we had, we get into that dilemma, I think it was over on Sunnyside in France with the Lorient. But here, in this particular situation, I think it's a matter of clarifying what, what the access may mean in terms of just dealing generally with the easement and understanding more fully what some of the options are for the Songstead family off of Benton Avenue. The thing, it might also be beneficial to know what, what kind of access the Songsteds might have to those rear lots that they have an interest in at 5424, 5420, 5455, 2020, Benton, as raised by Citizen Bale, Rick Bale, I think, said that they could have access that way. So that might all be helpful information for us to be able to make a more well-reasoned decision.
But I just want to be clear that, so those, you know, we know where the variables are, so we're clear on that, so we can actually get to a decision at the next meeting.
Right. I think it'll all evolve around those two options, as to whether we adopt either option or neither of, neither of them.
Right. Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment or follow-up? Okay, let's move on to the next and last public hearing matter before us this evening, and that is proposed Resolution 2020-58, which is a variance appeal for cellular antenna tower. And... Is Ms. Acker with us? I thought I saw her.
I am. I'm here.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I thought you saw her earlier. Thank you. Thanks for being with us this evening. So Assistant Planner Acker will introduce this matter.
Well, I'm trying to get up the PowerPoint. I'm having some difficulty with that.
Well, thanks for trying to share.
Well, I apologize. Can you help me out? Okay, so, there's my problem. Is it right there?
There, you're starting to share content now, Ms. Acker. There you go. You're, you're...
Thank you. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. On April 15th, 2020, the Planning Commission heard and unanimously approved a setback variance request for 5200 Doncaster Way, which is Highland Park. The request is for a 170-foot setback variance for a monopole cellular telecommunications antenna tower and light standard replacement to provide cellular service colocation for Crown Castle USA. You can see that there is a shadow right here. That's where the current monopole antenna tower is currently, that also has a light standard for the hockey rink. It's located just southeast of the hockey rink and a little bit north of the park building. So this is a little more detail of the location. The existing location is where the new monopole will be located, in the same location. There also will be some maintenance facility, equipment, which meets all of the setback and spacing requirements, so that is not requiring any type of variance. Antennas are allowed uses on park property, and the height of the antenna is going from 58 feet to 75 feet, and the height is within the ordinance requirements. What is not, is the setback. Once the antenna reaches 75 feet in height, then it has to maintain four times the distance of the height to any residential property. The closest residential property is at 5201 Doncaster. The existing tower, proposed tower in the same location, will be about 130 feet away from the residential property. So that's where the 170-foot setback variance request comes into play. So this is the proposed installation next to the existing, to the right, is existing. The current tower and light standard is 58 feet tall, and then it has the lights attached to it for the hockey rink. The new installation will be 17 feet taller, at 75 feet in height. It will include the existing antenna array, which is a T-Mobile array. It will include the light standards for the hockey rink, and then a Verizon colocation up to the 75 feet in height. So this gives you an idea. On the left-hand side of the screen is the existing installation that's currently there, and then on the right-hand side is the proposed installation with the two colocation of T-Mobile and Verizon. And then you can see a little bit of the light standard below. A little closer version, this is looking north towards the hockey rink. And then looking further back north towards the installation, again, on the left you have the proposed, or on the left you have the existing, and then on the right you have the proposed installation, and how it would look in context. The required setback for the new monopole is based on the height of 75 feet, so the structure would require a 300-foot setback from the property adjacent that is residential. They are at about 129.1 feet, or 130, 129.11 feet, or about 130 feet away, which is the existing setback currently for that existing monopole. This, actually, I wanted to show you the original submission for the variance application. The applicant came in with a different look or a different array. The monopole tower would be the same, was going to be the same height, at 75 feet. So you see to the right is the existing installation at 58 feet, and then the new installation at 75. The array was a different antenna, so they would have the same array for T-Mobile as well as they had proposed for Verizon, and it had a much different look that they were proposing originally. Staff asked them to go back and take a look at something that was a little less impacting in terms of how it looked. Again, on the right, you have the existing installation on the, I'm sorry, on the left you have the existing installation, on the right you have the proposed, what they had previously submitted originally for the variance request, and then what they had originally proposed at sort of the long view. And the equipment that is being proposed just east of the building meets all of the requirements, so that is not part of the variance request. The ordinance does require colocation, so if a new pole is going to be installed at 75 feet in height, it needs to be able to accommodate more than one carrier. So this was a goal within the ordinance, is to provide fewer of those monopoles, and to group all of that array in a colocation situation. So on April 15th, the Planning Commission did approve the setback variance for the 75-foot tall tower, indicating that the location was within the city park and will replace an existing park light standard and monopole antenna that will accommodate another service provider. Colocation is a goal of the city for the telecommunications towers, and the installation is a replacement of an existing light standard and antenna monopole that's currently there in that location, and that the proposed tower has been designed with flush-mounted antennas. They were told to come back with something that was a little less visually obtrusive. And with that, this is an appeal to the council of the Planning Commission's approval, and we had two appellants, one of which has indicated that they would speak tonight, Lori Murdies. And then we also have representatives for the applicants, Travis Schenk and Howard Roston. And with that, I will stop and answer if you have any questions.
Questions from Ms. Acker, Acker members? Mr. Mayor? Yes, Members Staunton.
I'm not sure if it's for Ms. Acker, or maybe for Mr. Barnes. I understand he's on the line as well. I'm interested in, I know that there was a lot of discussion about this over the last couple of years, and I'm interested in the efforts that went into exploring alternative locations. And Ms. Acker did a nice job of explaining the alternative array or configuration of the actual pole itself, but I'm wondering if there were other discussions about other locations within the park?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council Assistant Tim Barnes, coming on the meeting. Originally, when staff met, we met with our park director at the time, and we took into consideration of keeping that tower in the current location so that we could potentially expand or change the view of the shelter to enjoy the lake and the waterfront and to have the antenna behind us. And then we also got our tree forester, Luther, out there to examine the mechanical area where the shed, if you will, or the components needed for the antenna transmission would be located in the woods. So we took great length to make sure that we preserved the giant oak and the root base there. We also consulted with our ice operations for the winter, so that they would make a clear path around the ice free skating area, so it wouldn't be a hindrance to the skating operation that happens all winter over there at Highlands Park. And then lastly, the telecommunications people, we communicated with them that we would like to have a light standard on both sides of the rink, but it was immediately dropped by the communications company because of the closeness to the water and fear of, you know, having more regulation come upon the tower being located near that water body vicinity. So they opted, they looked me to keep it on the side that it is. So we tried to include several divisions in the city, parks, ice operations. We spoke to our forester and tried to do an in-depth look at how we could do this that would be aesthetically pleasing and feasible. I'm going to mute my mic.
So I guess I'm, I'm hearing that maybe there was an exploration of the other side of the rink nearer to the water. Were there any other locations within the park that were explored?
Yes, there is a tennis court that is part of the park. I don't know with my bearings to say where it is, and...
Yeah, kind of northwest, northwest of this site.
They requested, maybe, you know, could we put it there by that? And that did not, was not feasible to create the broadcast area that they want to affect, so they decided, no, we can't go there either.
Okay, thank you. Maybe the applicants will provide some additional information about the potential location areas. about the potential location areas. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other council members have any questions for Ms. Acker or Mr. Barnes? At this point in time? All right. We have at least one appellant on the line, I believe. Director Bennerott is the person, one of the people appealing this matter on the line. Is Murdis, Lori Murdis?
The person I have queued up first has a phone number that ends in 7000. Operator, if you could open that line and that, I hope it's, I hope it's the right person. I can't, I can't tell here. Maybe, Chris, you could send me phone numbers for the presenters if they're not properly in order.
I wasn't given their phone numbers, just their email addresses. So I don't know that.
Okay.
Well, it looks like Cindy Anderson is on the
On the WebEx?
On the WebEx.
Cindy Anderson, can you unmute your WebEx mic?
Ms. Anderson?
No, yes.
Yeah, there you go. You're all set.
I'm on another call right now that I have to take regarding my mother. I'll be back in just a minute. But the Murdises are waiting, trying to speak. So I'll be back in just a moment.
All right, thank you.
The 7,000 line is open. I'm not sure if it's a presenter or a testifier, but that line is open right now.
All right, let's take the testimony regardless, whether it's the appellant or someone else.
All right, operator has the line open. Caller whose phone number ends in 700, will you please begin by stating your full name and address? Caller whose number ends in 700, will you please press star one again? Out of the queue. The next caller we have has a phone number that ends in 8089. Operator, will you please open that line? And caller, please begin by stating your full name and address.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is Jack Murdis, and I'm at 5209 Doncaster Way.
Go ahead, Mr. Murdis.
Go ahead. You know, we're certainly supportive of a new tower that will improve cell service in the Highlands neighborhood. But we would like to share several concerns. You know, as you saw, the new tower is 17 feet taller, which is 30% higher than the current tower. Multiple antennas will be placed at the top. And we feel that if you've not noticed the old tower, you'll certainly notice the new one. The existing tower rises above the Warming House, which also hosts summer youth programs. And we noticed that at the base of the tower is a caution label stating it is a radio frequency area. Now Crown Castle believes that our concerns regarding safety lack scientific support. However, given the opportunity to place the tower further away from the Warming House and our children, why not? And we've also noticed that other cell towers in Edina have a fence around the base. And so there's certainly no fence around the base of the Highlands Tower. It's literally sitting between the Warming House and the hockey rink. And, you know, we looked at this and we feel that if the tower was moved approximately 200 feet northeast of the Warming House, of the current location, that would put it on the edge of the skating rink and into the woods, a setback variance would not be needed by the city. And it's likely, and it's our hope here at the neighborhood, that a new Warming House will be built in the new future. And it would be unfortunate to have the cell pole tower drive those design plans. Those are my comments. And we thank you for the opportunity to share these concerns this evening. So thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Murdis.
Do you have a few other callers on the line, including that number that ends in 7000? If that's you, please press star one again to get in the queue. Thank you for doing that. Operator, please open that line for 700. And caller, please begin by stating your full name and address. It's open, go ahead.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening.
Wonderful. Good evening. My name is Jenny Beamish, and my family and I reside at 5236 Lockluy Drive. I will echo the sentiment that Mr. Murdis was just expressing. My primary concern regarding this tower is the matter of safety related to our children. I would be in full support of a tower if it were located further away from the Warming House. Having reliable cellphone service is definitely a big concern of ours in terms of our children's safety. I have two boys that attend Highlands Elementary. They're nine and seven years old. And with this current pandemic and not having parental supervision for them 100% of the time, we've allowed them to explore our neighborhood, going for bike rides and enjoying the fresh air. And we rely on the Verizon Gizmo Watch, which allows us to have real-time GPS location, alerts us if they have left the neighborhood boundaries. And more importantly, allows us through their quick dial service to call them or they can call us when needed. And especially if there's an emergency, if they fell on their bike or got hurt or something even worse. Unfortunately, with our neighborhood's current unreliable cellphone coverage, there are many times when my children have tried to get ahold of me in an emergency situation or I've tried to get ahold of them. And I have not been able to contact them due to this unreliable cellphone service. So I do hope the city does explore options with this communication company to find other alternative locations for this tower. But I am in full support of the tower so that our neighborhood and our children can have reliable cellphone service. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Beamish.
Two more people on the line right now. Neither has indicated that they would like to speak. Again, as a reminder, if you're connected and would like to speak to the council, please press star one. Otherwise, council, I would recommend that you sit tight for a minute to see if any other callers join.
Thank you.
May I speak now for a minute?
Yes, Ms. Anderson, thank you.
Cindy Anderson, yes, sorry about that. I am the resident at 5201 Doncaster Way. My residence is the one that is directly adjacent to the park property. And so I have concern about the tower. I understand the need for better service. I'm not a Verizon customer, but I know how poor the service is in this area. I don't know if there's any options besides the park to be in a less residential area along Vernon or someplace where it's not right in the middle of a suburban residential area where, in a park, where like the Murdises and I too echo the sentiments that have been expressed about the concerns that we have about the location of it in a place where the community congregates right there. The summer programs are there, the skating is there, the tower's right in the midst of it. And this new one that is 17 feet taller and the images that are on there, the trees that are there currently and the trees on the graphic don't quite look the same, that it's really going to be unsightly. And I'm wondering if, I mean, I would be in favor of trying to move it further back into the park or considering, is there some other location besides Highlands Park that would be suitable? I know calls get dropped on Vernon all the time. And I don't know if this location is supposed to improve that area too or if there's another plan. But, and I too also do have concerns that the 5G service is too new to know really, are there going to be any long-term health effects from it? And so if it can be further away from a residence and mine being the first one that it's adjacent to, I have that concern. So thank you for the consideration. And I hope that, you know, we can come to something that will work for all.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Caller has a line that ends in 0985. Operator, will you please open the line for the person whose phone number ends with 0985? Caller, your line is open. Please begin by stating your full name and address.
Hi, my name is Sue Punch. I live at 5237 Lockluy Drive. My house is just kitty corner from the rink. Behind it would be to the southeast of the rink. And like Jenny Beamish said, I'm in full support of getting better technology to support our community. And especially given lots more people are working from home, I understand the need for this. I would reiterate and echo what the concerns are about our children and their safety, whether they use that space for a hockey rink or for soccer or for the kids' club that the city has there every summer, except for this summer because of COVID. So I'm primarily concerned about the health effects of this. Jack Murdis said there's preliminary research, and maybe Cindy reiterated too, but there's preliminary research that's indicating that this has really negative health effects. And I don't think we should take those lightly. And I believe the city council's mission includes all this kind of development and improvement. But in your mission statement, you also state, or it is stated that we're looking out for the health and well-being of the residents. So I think we need to find a balance between this development and improvement and the health and well-being of all the, really hundreds of people that use that space year-round. So those are my comments. I hope that this can vary seriously, the health and well-being of our community in balance with technological improvement. I hope that we can find a different site or at a minimum, move it to a safer distance from that skating rink where the kids and families, that space. It's one of the things that we tout as a community. A huge drop is all of the parks and recreation spaces we offer to our residents. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Punch.
You're welcome.
Well, I don't have anyone else in the queue right now. Again, if you've called in and would like to provide testimony, please press star one on your telephone keypad now. Otherwise, council, please wait a few moments before moving on. Safe for you to move on now.
All right, thank you. We've heard from the appellants. And Mr. Rosten, with respect to your clients, how would you like to proceed with your response? And then I think there'll be some questions for you too with regard to some of these issues raised by the appellants and other concerned neighbors in the broader neighborhood around the park.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Howard Rosten. I'm a lawyer at Fredrickson &amp; Byron. I'll be here on behalf of Crown Castle. Also with me from Crown Castle is Travis Schenk. And between the two of us, we're going to try to address the comments. The more technical comments are going to have to be addressed to Mr. Schenk. But if it's okay with the mayor and the city council, I can proceed with my comments.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Rosten. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. First and foremost, on behalf of Crown Castle, we'd very much like to thank the city staff and appreciate all their time and effort in what has been a two-year process in evaluating the existing structure and determining where the best place would be in the best interest of the city for the new structure that Crown Castle proposes to build. This two-year process resulted in a staff report that was a recommendation for approval of the variances requested. And then culminated, as the council knows, in a Planning Commission recommendation of approval as well. To go over some basic facts, the proposed pole is 75 feet high and replaces an existing approximately 58-foot pole in the same location. As the council has heard, the structure doubles as a lighting standard for the city's rink. There's been questions raised on this call, members of the council, about the appropriate location for the pole. And I can tell you, and Mr. Schenk can tell you, this has been exhaustively studied by not only Crown Castle, but to our knowledge, city staff. And it's not as simple as just saying, please move the pole 200 yards, 200 feet or somewhere else. There are significant engineering and considerations of access, connectivity, elevation, distance, reliable services and a number of engineering standards that I'm not going to pretend to understand in evaluating the precise location where a pole like this should be. I think what's important is that after this exhaustive two-year study, this was the best result that the city staff, working in conjunction with Crown Castle, arrived at. And we think the council should place great emphasis on that detail analysis. The structure directly forwards and advances a city policy and ordinance that favors co-location for this type of infrastructure. In other words, the goal is to not have a separate structure for Verizon, a separate structure for T-Mobile, a separate structure for any other cell carrier. This advances an express city goal of putting these services in a single location to avoid as much as possible multiple locations. From a network standpoint, the structure as proposed fills a very significant need for connectivity for the city. And you've heard some of the comments from the city residents about the need for better connectivity. And certainly, that's critical. But one of the most important reasons for upgrading this infrastructure is the need for reliable service for first responders, ambulances, fire trucks. Some of the information that we've submitted from Verizon show how the difference in coverage is inside the house, inside a vehicle, outside, both before and then after this structure will be built. And this additional infrastructure dramatically increases the connectivity, which promotes safety for the city and its residents in critical times of needing first responders. Keep in mind that, based on the studies that have been done, more than 50% of the households in Minnesota rely only on cell phones for connectivity and communication. I don't have the data for this particular part of Edina. I don't have the data for this particular part of Edina and whether or not that varies from Minnesota as a whole. Maybe Mr. Schenk has a more refined study, but I think it's easy to at least assume or extrapolate from those numbers that Edina is no different than the rest of the state in terms of who relies on cell phones. This becomes even more critical as we are all entering a new normal where people are working from home. And as more people work from home, there's more reliance on iPads, computers, cell phones, and the myriad of other devices that require connectivity. So, this type of infrastructure is not simply a convenience for members of the city and citizens of the city, although certainly convenience is important. This is for people's ability to work from home and first responders when necessary. Now, we have seen some emails and heard some of the public comments about health concerns. And let me first state by saying, on behalf of Crown Castle, we very much appreciate public sentiment. We appreciate the fact it's an open process, this should be an open process, and we welcome all comments from the public, and we think everybody should have the right to be heard. What the actual data shows though, and that the actual studies show, and you don't have to rely on Crown Castle or Verizon, is that these claims for health impacts are not backed up by reliable science. And we provided you with, I don't know, 15 or 20 pages of information from various different governmental and non-governmental organizations that study this and have concluded there's no impacts to, there's no negative health impacts. I won't go through all of those organizations, but they include, for example, the FCC, the World Health Organization, the American Cancer Society, the National Institute of Health, U.S. Food and Drug, Sloan-Kettering Cancer Center. So, as you can see, this is not an issue that's been ignored by either the industry or by the regulators or by private industry. It's been studied over and over, and the conclusion is there is no scientific support for any health impacts. The, I guess the three points we'd like to make are, one, again, this was an exhaustive process by the city council, or the city staff, and we very much appreciate that, as well as the planning commission. The variance standards that are adopted by the city that generally follow the state of Minnesota statutes, and the standards are clearly met in this case, and give the city the latitude to grant the variance requested. And then, although I am mindful of the fact that a city council meeting is certainly not a place to air necessarily legal arguments, underlying all of this is some preemptive language in the Federal Telecommunications Act. Again, I'm confident we don't need to get there, and I'm confident that once the city council reviews what the work at staff has done and its own variance standards, that it will see that these variances, this variance should be granted. So, those are my prepared remarks. Again, we appreciate all the time and effort. Mr. Schenk may have some information to add specifically about location or otherwise, but I'm happy to answer some questions.
Questions for Mr. Rosten? Or are there questions that council members wish to hold for Mr. Schenk that are more technical in nature?
Yeah, I'd like to hear from Mr. Schenk.
All right. Mr. Schenk, welcome, and look forward to you discussing some of these issues about the location, the height of the pole, the health concerns, the fencing. I think you heard some of the concerns of the neighbors, and I'm sure these are concerns that you've heard other places as you've gone about the task of improving cellular service other places. So, could you address some of these issues for us, please?
Yes, I will do my best. Thank you again for having us and having the meeting in this format. Really appreciate the addressing public comment and having the opportunity to speak. In terms of the location, we, as has been stated, we have worked with the city staff, as well as RF engineers for both Verizon and T-Mobile. T-Mobile is existing on this tower. They're kind of a passive applicant at this point, but we still have to look at both parties and figure out what is best. We're looking at both the RF needs, which actually stems from the users of the network in the community. And we have to kind of find that balance, right, of meeting the RF needs, but also what is the least intrusive means of co-location here. We felt like the location towards the rear of the park, which is, you know, by the lake, would actually be more impactful on the park and therefore the community due to a requirement to have an access road either across the lake, from another street, from another, you know, point, or around the park buildings that are in existence there. So, we felt like that that was not all that feasible and a greater impact to the park and community. So, that's why we settled on pretty much a two-to-three-foot separation from existing pole to planned pole. Any further questions on that aspect?
Well, I think there was one question raised by Mr. Murdis right off the bat was, you know, why couldn't you move it 200 feet to the northeast and you wouldn't need a variance? Is that, what are your comments about that in terms of the location and the ability to provide the type of cell service that I think the neighbors need and you expect to be able to provide if you move the location to the one that Mr. Murdis was suggesting? Or somewhere else in the park, for that matter?
Yeah, I believe so that would be, is that closer to the existing tree line? Is that, I'm just trying to get my bearings on where that might be located.
Yeah, probably back into the woods or near the edge of the woods. Is that, that would be?
Again, just the access to that. And then, trees create a barrier to RF. So, we have to think about the height of the tower, which comes into play in terms of how far the coverage extends away from the center of the pole. And then, what is, what can potentially block that signal? So, moving them, moving the tower closer to the trees, I think would have played a significant issue, especially with T-Mobile who's lower on the tower than any additional future applicants that may want to co-locate on this tower as well. So, all of those things kind of come into play when we're thinking about location and I am not an RF engineer, so I just want to make that clear as well. We rely heavily on Verizon, our RF engineers at Verizon and RF engineers at T-Mobile to make those assessments.
Well, it seems like a fundamental question would be, why 75 feet? So, you're up 17 feet higher than you were before, and why 75, not 80? What's the data that you have on the percent of improvement in cellphone service for that area? How does it enhance your broadcast area? Some of those types of questions that are, I think, fundamental to improving service over in that particular area, including for public service or public safety personnel, and also for the school district, which I think has really poor, poor cell service right now up at Highlands Grade School.
Well, we, again, want to make sure that we're providing a tower that meets those RF needs in the least intrusive manner. I believe that originally, we started off with an 80-foot tower, and we dropped it by five feet because we felt like we could meet the RF needs here in this location. If you take a look, I'm sure you have in front of you the slides of Verizon prepared, which shows graphically how this tower is going to interact with its surroundings and the surrounding network. And if you can pull up slide four, page four on that slide.
Okay, I've got that one. You know, I'll switch from Mr. Rosten's letter over there to the existing LTE coverage versus predicted.
That is correct. So, on that first slide, you'll see that there is significant gap in coverage. And in some, in fact, in some places adjacent to the tower, Verizon is only, only has outdoor strength coverage, which is indicated in a bluish tone. It's kind of showing up as purple on mine, so, but yeah, that bluish tone is indicative of outdoor-only coverage, which is very spotty and somewhat unreliable, especially if you're moving in a car or going indoors. So, then, and move to slide five, you'll see, this is what it, what it's proposed to look like when the tower is turned on. The coverage in this area and the surrounding neighborhood improves significantly.
On that map, you show a bunch of other towers. Are those similar-sized towers, like on Interlocken or Walnut?
Um, I'm not familiar with those towers off the top of my head. Not for sure exactly what the height of those towers are. They are certainly part of Verizon's network. And this is kind of filling in a donut hole in coverage, so to speak.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could ask a couple other questions?
Member Sotin, yes, just please.
So, on the, and the staff report had the plan sheet A1, which shows kind of the existing building and where you're planning to put the equipment, as well as the walkway or the access way there. So, you're already going to put an access way there. And am I hearing you say that, well, I guess maybe just ask the question, why not put the tower over where the equipment is?
Let me bring that up. Well, again...
Staff can maybe share the plan A1 that was in there?
Yep, no, I'm looking, I'm looking at what you're looking at now. So, again, I'm not totally for sure exactly what the, what the, what the service would look like in that proposed location, but remembering the existing customer that's on the existing tower, having to relocate that a significant distance away may have come into play in citing this tower. But also, just the vegetation and other impacts of locating a tower up in, up in that area comes into play, or it's a, would be the foundation of a tower. And here again, I'm not an engineer, I'm just a planner.
So, maybe let me ask you this way, I mean, was it explored?
Yes, yes. We had, we did explore all the options everywhere on the, on the park parcel in trying to figure out the least intrusive means. We believe, even with the construction of a path to the off-site compound here, was at least, was, you know, the lesser of two evils, I guess, so to speak, in terms of locating the tower back in the back, as opposed to just locating the compound equipment off near the tree line. And the reason for that is the heaviness of the equipment that's required to install antennas on a tower. With this, with this drive path or access path to the compound, the heaviness of the equipment is, it's not quite as significant.
So, you're saying there'd have to be a bigger path?
That's correct.
Did you explore any other locations other than this park?
Again, so therein, we did not explore any other parcels in relation to this, simply because we have an existing tower at this, at this park. We also have a, this is right in the middle of a significant gap in coverage. And so, that is the first thing that we have to look for, especially in terms of looking at federal law, citing law, and trying to make sure that we're within those terms as well. And then again, least intrusive means.
Member Sotin, any follow-on?
That's it, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Other council members' questions for Mr. Schenk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
For Mr. Rosten, yes, Member Anderson.
Thank you. Mr. Schenk, is this, you've made a really good case for explaining coverage, and I'm just wondering, is this is the optimal install location for you? Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, so, so the concerns that we've heard expressed from testimony so far are really that location in juxtaposition to a lot of kids and families? And I, you know, I'm not an expert in this, I'm far from it. What are their concerns? Help me understand that. Is there, is there a health concern of any kind?
According to lots and lots of research, experts, people, and I am not, again, I'm not that expert, I rely on people to do the research. But according to that research, no, there are no, no health concerns. The way that I also interpret the data, there are no health concerns for the children that would be using this park either passively or the ice skating rink in the winter, or within the building and the other programs that the city offers here.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I can chime in on that question, that is the reason we submitted the information from all of these other organizations. We didn't want the citizens of the city of Edina or the city council to have to take our word for it. First of all, we're not experts, and obviously, we're the applicants. So, the whole point of submitting this information was to say, here's what the actual experts say on these topics. And all of that information we submitted, I believe is, I believe is either footnoted or there's a link to the actual studies that they cite. And I tried to read through some of it as I was preparing for it, and I fully admit that going to law school didn't prepare me to understand the details in there, other than the headnote version, which is what I put in front of the council.
Yes, thank you for that. You did a good job with it too, by the way.
Thank you.
And as I reviewed it, I noticed it, I saw your resources, and yet, you know, these questions remain, and that's the reason I asked these questions. I want to be certain that everybody there, every person testifying has said that they want greater coverage and that they need it, and there's good reason for that. The area is underserved, especially the school. I saw a letter or two earlier today that cited a public health hazard in the event that they couldn't, they couldn't... that they couldn't make a call in case of an emergency. I get that. So these ongoing concerns and some other publications that I've read, though, open the question, that's the reason I ask you, just for assurances this evening.
Sure, and we, again, we fully support comments from the public and want to address the concerns to the extent that we can.
Thank you.
Mr. Roston, amongst the array of entities that you indicated that provided information on this public health safety issue were, I think, the European Commission, as well as the United Kingdom, and I think both Norway and Sweden had looked at this issue as well, whether or not there were health risks with this RF-5G technology. Is that a fair analysis of your letter?
Yeah, the entire list, I believe, is on, maybe on the second-to-last page, or, yeah, the second-to-last page of my letter, and it goes through, I'm going to guess, a dozen different governmental and non-governmental organizations, some of them domestic, some of them foreign, but yes, the United Kingdom Health Protection Agency, Government of Canada, Australian Rational Protection and Nuclear Safety Agency. So it's a worldwide group of entities that have chimed in on this.
All right. So I think Member Anderson made some really good points there. You know, we know that this area needs better cell service, we've known it for years, we've had folks in that neighborhood telling us for a half a dozen years, they are getting cell phone calls dropped all the time. Obviously means you need a taller tower. I like the way you've worked through the multiple antenna issue that you've now managed to deal with co-location, which is appreciated, and you pulled those, part of the towers closer, part of the array, I should say, closer to the tower. That's all helpful information. One of the questions that Mr. Murdis raised was everywhere he goes around town, there's a fence around the base of the tower, and maybe the building that you have for service purposes. You didn't address that issue. What about the fencing issue, Mr. Schenk?
Yeah, sure, I can address that. I, though, really, a fence is not standard around a light pole. And so that's the difference between the two. Also, our compound equipment is located in a separate spot from the pole, and that compound will have a fence around it. So really, the fencing is, that you see in other places around town, that's to protect the compound, the ground equipment. There's expensive computers there, there's copper. So really, that's what those fences are for. And we do just want to generally protect the entire asset. But in this case, it just doesn't make any sense to put a fence around this light standard installation. There's not an existing fence around the current pole, and we haven't had any incidents there, as far as I know.
All right, so you will be putting fencing, however, around the ground equipment, as you've characterized it?
That's correct. And the T-Mobile equipment is also located in the building, and so that one is already surrounded by walls integral to the building.
So, back to one of the fundamental issues, and I suppose we all assume that you're putting a tower high enough in the air to eliminate all the problems that have been there historically. Are you doing that? Is everybody over there going to have excellent cell phone service, or are there still going to be dead zones?
As far as we can tell, if you are a Verizon customer, this will significantly improve your coverage. Of course, T-Mobile's is not going to change. So we try to address that with, they would try to address that with different equipment, but at this point, yes, Verizon's service will improve in this location.
So that sounds a little hedgy to me, significantly improved. What I asked was, are we going to have a dead zone problem over there with respect to the school, with respect to public safety personnel, with respect to all the people that live in that neighborhood? Are they going to have good cell phone service as a result of a potential approval of this tower or not?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, that is, the purpose of us submitting the information from Verizon was to show just how dramatically increased the coverage is going to be. That's what that colored map shows that we placed before the council. Now, again, neither Mr. Schenk or I are engineers, so I'm certainly not going to misrepresent the council that if you're in a basement of a particular house somewhere, that everybody's going to have perfect coverage. But from what we're being told by the Verizon folks with the information we've submitted, is it's going to be a heck of a lot better than it is right now.
So, Mr. Roston, would you ask Verizon to address that issue?
Sure, I understand you're leaving the public comments open until the 10th, and I'll see what additional information we can get out of Verizon and submit that to the city.
Yep, and we're going to take it up on the 16th. So, you know, we've worked on this for a long time, I just want to make sure we get it right. And to sit here and read a coverage map, as opposed to them making a representation as to how effective they are going to be on improving cell phone service over there, I think has some distinct value for the council and everybody that lives in that neighborhood, our public safety personnel and the school district.
Sure, and just to be clear to the council, I don't represent Verizon, I can certainly ask, I don't want to make a, my promise to the council is that I will ask, and I will ask them to submit information if we can. I don't want to misrepresent that I control that situation because I don't represent Verizon, but I'll certainly ask the question.
Yep, I ask you in your capacity as representative of your client, who has a relationship with Verizon.
Fair enough, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, could you clarify where the school is located, and I will also look that up?
Mr. Schenk, I know where it is, I'll tell you where it is.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Member Stotin?
Can you add to that? I don't feel like I've gotten a very satisfactory answer to what alternative locations were explored, and especially the notion of locating the tower where the equipment is. And so I understand that maybe Mr. Schenk or Mr. Roston don't have that information available, but if they could provide that information, I would appreciate. That's an important question for me to have a handle on before I can make a decision.
Agreed. I think that's a good one for them to add to their list. Member Brindle?
Question, so earlier, we were talking about the height of the trees and how a tree can impede the access to the tower and then cause poorer service. Did I understand correctly that the T-Mobile part of the tower is no higher, will be no higher than it currently is?
Mr. Schenk?
Yes, let me, I'm looking at the construction drawings now, just to confirm that, but that's, that is my understanding that they're no higher, they'll be located no higher than they currently are.
Okay, so when the tower that's currently there was put up, I can imagine that the T-Mobile part of the pole was probably above the tree line. And the tree line has gotten higher, and so now the T-Mobile part of the tower is not going to be any higher than it was before, which means the trees are going to continue to grow. So we have an opportunity here with a taller tower to make sure that what needs to be above tree line in order for people to have good service is above tree line. And if the trees are going to continue to grow and I can imagine be in the way of accessing the T-Mobile part of that tower, we're going to be back here with a problem trying to figure out better service for T-Mobile users.
So if T-Mobile had an issue with service there and they wanted to address that, they would basically like ordering something that you need from Amazon, from us. They put it in order, we look at it, and they can co-locate, or sorry, move their equipment up or down on the tower as they need. And now that we have additional tower height, if they so desire to do that, they can move their equipment up to a different level, so as long as it does not interfere with Verizon's equipment. And we can help ensure that that is not the case through various means. But yeah, there's now the ability for them to improve their coverage if they so desire, if they need it.
Okay, well, I share the concern about, and the desire to understand better where the best place for the tower is. If this is the best place for the tower, then it's the best place for the tower. The only other thing is that, another thing mentioned is that the, the computers, the, it's not on the tower.
The ground equipment, I think he called it.
Okay, for T-Mobile is located in the warming house. Do I understand that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, so, and Verizon's is going to be placed in a new structure, off of ways that is fenced. I, you know, I guess, why can't Verizon's equipment go in the building?
Room.
Oh, okay. It's just capacity?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
I just wanted to chime in, we did research that, and it was significant impact on the shelter that would have been more of an encumbrance with any future development with the shelter to add additional space.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Barnes?
Okay, those are my questions.
All right. So as we did with the last public hearing matter, the notion is to leave this public hearing open until noon on June 10th for further submissions, either electronically or by voicemail, and then continue this action on this item to the June 16, 2020 City Council meeting. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Motion by Member Brindle, second by Member Fisher, I think, with respect to closing the public hearing at noon on June 10th, with respect to Resolution 2020-58, which is a variance appeal for cellular antenna tower at Highlands Park, and continue the action on the item to the June 16 City Council meeting. Any further discussion? Call, call, please.
Member Anderson?
Hi.
Member Brindle?
Hi.
Sure.
Hi.
Member Stotin?
Hi.
Mayor Havelin?
Hi. Matters continued to the June 16 City Council meeting and left open until noon on June 10th for supplemental testimony.
Thanks to everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Good conversation. Thank you. Now we're going to move on to, that concludes our public hearing portion of the agenda. We're going to move on to reports and recommendations. We've got a few matters there to deal with. First one is a wording of a sale of 5.220 million in general obligation bonds. I saw Nick Anhut was with us this evening, and our Finance Director, Don Urum, I think is going to introduce the topic. Let me get to that agenda item and pull that one up. All right, Mr. Urum, welcome.
Mayor, members of the City Council, pleased to announce that we had an excellent bond sale today. I'm going to talk briefly about our rating agency reports, and we'll turn it over to Nick Anhut from Ellers, our independent financial advisor, to talk about kind of the results of the bond sale. So I will share my screen. We have a short PowerPoint. Do, can you see it or not?
Yes.
Yeah. Great. So what I'm going to talk about is today's bond sale. So our ratings history, we have had a AAA bond rating from Moody's Investor Services since 2000. So this year is our 20th anniversary of having a AAA bond rating. And with S&amp;P, we've had that AAA bond rating since 2003. A lot of the comments that both Moody's and S&amp;P said this year are similar to comments that they have made in the past. So in terms of what Moody's has said, some of our credit strengths include, we have a large and affluent economy and residential and commercial tax base, we have healthy financial operations and reserves. Now, part of that is the council policy to retain 47% of next year's spending in fund balance. We also have great liquidity. Comments that they continue to bring up include the debt load that we carry, as well as a pension liability, which is above the, and above average fixed costs compared to national peers. S&amp;P, again, similar comments to previous years, we have very strong economy, management, budgetary flexibility and liquidity. But something a little different this year from S&amp;P compared to last year is the budgetary performance is similar. We typically have a, we typically outperform our budget in terms of revenues and expenses. But one of the things I talked about this year was our debt and contingent liability position being strong. So that's an improvement over last year. Both Moody's and S&amp;P were very complimentary of the actions that the council took to, one, fund the budget stabilization fund, and also to do a budget amendment in terms of a reduction in expenditures of $2 million due to the decrease in expected revenues. So they both appreciated that the council took those actions. Now I'll turn it over to Nick to talk a little bit about the bond sale.
Thank you, Director Urum. Before you do that, does anyone have any questions or comments relative to the reissuance of our double AAA bond rating by both rating agencies? For Mr. Urum, Director Urum. All right, thank you. Go ahead. Mr. Anhut, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, Nick Anhut from Ellers and Associates. It's great to be in front of you, even in this setting. To piggyback on Don's comments, congratulations on affirmation of the rating. Both analysts at Moody's and S&amp;P were very, very favorable on the city's actions taken in spite of having a overall negative outlook on the global economy as well as municipalities at large across the nation. So kudos to you all for making those tough decisions, and it certainly shined through in those discussions. The bond issue proposed before you this evening, we received eight bids on behalf of the city from various underwriters across the country to purchase the city's bonds. These are bonds that are backed by the city's full faith and credit, its general obligation pledge, meaning that in case revenues come short, you will pledge to make up the difference with your ability to levy a tax or utilize any other funds on hand. This is fixed-rate, tax-exempt financing, and it's going to be utilized to pay for the 58th. This is fixed rate tax exempt financing and it's going to be utilized to pay for the 58th Street project that you're entertaining this year, as well as various utility system improvements associated with that project and potential system improvements later on this year. The bonds are expected to be fully repaid from assessment revenues and net revenues of the utility systems and only have a dedicated tax levy component. A low bid came in at just a hair over 1%. That's 1% for the entirety of the bond issue as a composite rate. 1.02 was the low bid from Piper Sandler, the high bid at 1.34%. Differential between those in terms of your potential interest costs over the 15-year repayment is $133,000. We are in a very low interest rate environment these days, due in part because of the pandemic and some of the activities that the Federal Reserve is taking to try to keep rates as low as possible and preserve liquidity at this time. And this is certainly shining through on that, as well as reflection on the AAA credit rating, which does offer you the lowest potential rates municipalities can borrow at. On the next slide is all eight of the bids from, that we saw this morning. Piper Sandler, again, the winner, they're partnering with another firm, Cantor Fitzgerald, on the bond issue in their purchase. We see Baird as well, who's purchased the bonds of the city in the past, less than one basis point or one hundredth of a percentage point above Piper Sandler's bid. And then all of the other firms representing various underwriters from across the country. It's a very good mix and how closely they are, the spread between the low and the high, that tight window is some indication that there is a consensus in the marketplace on where these bonds should be pricing at, namely the top three bids, all coming in within two hundredths of a percentage point of each other. Final sizing of the bonds will be 5.22 million dollars. This does reflect a price premium that Piper Sandler included within their bid. That premium is additional proceeds on top of that principal amount that'll be utilized to fund these projects. 390,000 of it will be payable from special assessments related to the 58th Street project. That'll be repaid over a 15-year term. The interest rate or the true interest cost component related just to that small portion of the bond issue is 1.48%. As it is 15 years out, the utility components are going to be repaid over a 10-year term or accelerated faster. And they will actually incur less than 1% on that 10-year repayment, 0.97% true interest cost. And that'll deliver 5.3 million in proceeds for you to utilize within your capital improvement projects. In closing, on the final slide, there is before you a resolution in consideration to authorize the issuance, award the sale and prescribe the form in detail of 5.22 million in general obligation bonds. This will allow you to fund the projects that we've identified. It will award the purchase of the bonds to Piper Sandler. And closing will be scheduled for June 25th, when they will wire the funds into the city to provide for the projects. Again, a very, very favorable result. We're very happy with this result, the bidding in general, as well as the affirmation of the credit rating, and be happy to entertain the council's questions.
Questions by council members, for either Director Urum or Mr. Anhut? Yes, Member Brindle.
Thank you. I really don't have a question, but the comments you made about the reaction to Moody's and S&amp;P's continuance of the double AAA and even as Director Urum said, the improved outlook on some of the decisions made, that's a direct reflection on Director Urum and Manager Neil. They came forward with a plan and explained it to us. They did some very good work quickly because this change in the economy happened very quickly. And so that's my comment is just kudos to staff because we wouldn't have taken this action. We may have seen something and started thinking about it, but it certainly wouldn't have happened as quickly and probably wouldn't have been as completely thought out as it was that it came to them. So kudos to staff for putting us in a great position.
All right. Thank you, Member Brindle. Other comments from council members? I had a question for you, Mr. Anhut. The composite interest rate, the low bid from Piper Sandler, 1.0208%, what were you kind of anticipating you'd see in the market for our low bid? Is it in line with what you were anticipating or is it a better performance than you anticipated?
I think it's safe to say it's a better performance as far as the rate that's involved. Our predictions.
I'm losing my internet connection. Are you upstairs?
Oh. Excuse me. We were expecting, Don and I had a discussion late last week, thinking that, you know, I would be happy with a below 1.5%, albeit somewhat conservative in that estimate. But this is certainly much, much better than that. And as you can see, all eight of the bids came in below that threshold. So we are favorable of that bid and we do think it shows in comparison to some of the other sale activities that we've seen over the last couple of weeks. This is a very favorable result.
I'd say in the years that I've been serving on the council and serving our town, this is about as low a rate as I've ever seen, I think. It's really, it's impressive.
It's pretty close to low.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I've been in this business 30 years. I have never seen a bond sale at this rate.
Me neither.
Would you say this was solid, Don?
Yeah, I guess, I guess we could use that term.
All right. Well, let Stephanie Hawkins know here. Everybody in the audience, that was an inside joke from our work session meeting. Anyway, yeah, you can see that ear to ear grin on Don Urum's face for that, with that interest rate. And it's really a wonderful thing. And I think Member Brindle made a great point that when it started looking like we were heading into choppy water with COVID, you guys got right on it with that notion on how to create a budget stabilization fund, the source of those funds, pulling it out of old surplus amounts we had from, I think, 16, 17, 18, somewhere in that range, and then the budget amendment that lowered our spending. So all of that was good. And then that was all done before we even had the CARES Act coming into place. And so that's going to have a positive impact for us, I think, in terms of recapturing some of the monies that we've expended that are directly or indirectly related to COVID-19. So we should be in really quite fine shape. It feels good to be on another round of double AAA bond ratings, too. So thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. And to Ellers, thank you for your constantly good counsel on public finance issues. Really appreciate it. And I saw our city attorney nodding his head, too. I think he's thinking this is about as lower rate as he's seen on bonds, too.
Anything I've ever seen.
All right. So folks, we have a resolution in front of us, 2020-59, which would authorize the issuance of the bonds, the awarding of the sale to Piper Sandler. The amount would be 5.220 million in general obligation bond series 2020A. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
So move.
Member Fisher's, and Member Brindle. Member Brindle moves, Member Fisher seconds. Any further discussion? Ms. Allison, do you have your, are you back in business?
I am. Sorry about that earlier.
All right.
I apologize.
Would you do a roll call for us?
Member Anderson.
Hi.
Member Brindle.
Hi.
Member Fisher.
Hi.
Member Staunton.
Everybody's fighting for bandwidth in their house.
Right. Mayor Hovland.
Hi.
Motion passes, the resolution passes, I should say, and we are here with awarding the sale of 5.220 million in general obligation bonds to the low bidder, Piper Sandler, at 1.0208% composite. So congratulations, everybody. That was quite a wonderful piece of work.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, thanks. And now we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is potentially amending, ordinance 2020-08, which would potentially amend Chapter 12 of the Edina City Code concerning flavored tobaccos and our, Community Health Administrator Jeff Brown is with us to make the presentation. And then I think the council's got some conversation here to be had about how to deal with this issue.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Hovland, council members. Jeff Brown, Community Health Administrator, and I'm sharing my screen, so hopefully you can see these slides.
We can.
Okay. So I just have a few slides, just to kind of give the timeline and some background of where we were and where we have been and now where we are. So this tobacco ordinance update really follows a real similar path to the Tobacco 21 ordinance that we have passed previously. This one is in regard to flavored, the sale of flavored products. So the timeline, in 2019, the Community Health Commission on their work plan had an item related to reducing youth access to vaping products, as you can see here. And that item was continued in a slightly different language on the 2020 Community Health Commission work plan. And actually, the commission was nearing completion of that at the end of 2019, so it was kind of an in-between item. And so on December 17th of 2019, the Community Health Commission submitted an advisory communication to council, along with a staff report from me advising the code change to prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco products in the city. So, and then we had some other issues to deal with, with the pandemic and things, but now we're here on, and in April, we had to do a notification to all licensed tobacco establishments. And so we sent the notification of the intent to change the ordinance on April 24th, meeting those statutory requirements. So what the ordinance would do, would add a definition of what a flavored tobacco product to the existing city code language. That would include flavored cigarettes and cigars, chewing tobacco and vaping products. And then the ordinance prohibits, or the code language prohibits the sale of flavored tobacco products in Edina. And that would be effective on September 1st of 2020. So tonight is the first reading of the ordinance, not asking to waive the second reading as of tonight, and then would bring the ordinance back on June 16th for the second reading and the final vote. And then the ordinance would be effective on September 1st. And that's, those are the, those are the slides I have, and if anyone has questions, I'll be happy to try to answer.
Now, I expect there'll be some questions here. I think Member Fisher had a question.
Yeah, I have a few questions. It seems to me when we were dealing with Tobacco 21 legislation and our ordinance regarding that, I feel like we had a public hearing. Is there a reason we wouldn't go through that same type of process here?
You're right. When we did Tobacco 21, we did choose, council did choose to do a public hearing. It's not something that we've talked about this time around, but it's definitely something that's council prerogative if we'd like to do that.
Looks like Scott's got his handle.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Our general protocol has been that we don't hold public hearings for, we don't schedule, I'll say, we don't schedule from a staff perspective, public hearings for items that aren't required to have a public hearing by either city code or by state statute. We do vary from that from time to time when city council feels in their wisdom like you want to have a special public hearing for some reason, and in those cases, we schedule it.
I mean, part of, so, and this is just sort of an interesting perspective, and I'd be curious, I'd really be curious to hear what this looks like outside of like the council perspective. But for me, I don't, I guess, two weeks ago or so, I started getting a lot of emails about this topic. And of course, I actually got the information in my packet on Friday, and we had some other things going on over the weekend, you know, a lot happening. So I feel like, and I noticed there were some comments about, you know, maybe not as much responsiveness from the council to these emails. But I'm like, you know, it's hard to respond to something when you don't know what you're, you know, the people emailing know apparently more about it than I do at that time. Now I have a much better idea. So it feels like the discussion can start now, once we ask some questions tonight, get a little understanding about where this has come from, where it's going. So it feels like, you know, people were two weeks ahead of us. We need to give a little catch-up, a little dialogue, and then, and then make a good decision, however that happens. So that's why I'm asking, you know, just felt like we had more of that dialogue. And I realize we're not scheduled to make a decision here tonight, but just to understand, you know, the best way to get the whole range of input.
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Member Anderson.
Yeah, just to kind of piggyback on Member Fisher's comments, we did have some communication over the last couple of days from a coalition of neighborhood retailers who were expressing the fact that they didn't have a chance to present their arguments. So on a procedural basis, I guess I have a question more than anything else. Is that something that we can, they were asking for a continuation earlier today, so I would ask you, our manager Neil, is that something we want to consider procedurally or not?
I think a lot of the feedback that you've received so far are from interest groups and lobbyists. I know you've received some from residents as well, but we've had a lot of interest group and lobbyist interest in this issue. And I see a fair amount of their communication coming through, coming through on our email input systems, too. Regarding whether you're going to have a public hearing about it or not, it's not necessary for the adoption of the ordinances. We did do it the last time, we did a major step forward in our tobacco ordinance, so it may be a good idea to do it this time, too. And it's certainly something we could schedule for our June 16th meeting.
So could I just rephrase my question from before? So what, how is it that, you know, all of these people were well-versed in sharing their arguments one way or another, weeks ahead of, at least one full week, I thought it was two weeks, ahead of us actually getting the information? What's the, how does that happen? Is it, you know, they just pick up on or what?
Yeah, they do. They're plugged in from the lobbyist interest group side of the world. They're plugged into this issue and when they sniff around and hear of some city that's thinking about it at the commission level, so they knew that this was being discussed at the, at the Community Health Commission level, and they had a sense of where it was going, and they had made some calls to understand what the process was going to be. But that's why they were engaging you so quickly. They've come to learn that that's, that's their best strategy for success.
And Jeff's memo and the Health Commission memo were both from December. Yeah. So that was out there.
Yep. They knew this was coming.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
So the last time we dealt with Tobacco 21, we took testimony, we did have a public hearing because we wanted to hear both sides of the issue. Turns out we were the first city in the state to entertain a Tobacco 21 ordinance, and now it's statewide. What are the, Jeff, what are the implications for the legislature now dealing with this issue? And the multiplicity of... Uh, and the, and the multiplicity of, of products you have, uh, proposed for us incorporated in the, uh, ordinance, uh, at a legislative session and dealing with it on a statewide basis versus, uh, us dealing with it on a one-off basis?
It's a little different than Tobacco 21. We, we're not, we would not be the first. Uh, there are other cities, um, and I guess I don't, I can't rattle off the list, uh, off the top of my head, but there are other cities that have flavored, um, limitations or prohibitions. Um, there are some, uh, cities that do it, do a different, um, they exempt certain sections, like menthol is sometimes exempted, um, uh, for different reasons. So, um, so there are variations of it. Um, I think we are, we would be still very early on in this as, as far as a statewide, um, initiative. Uh, as with Tobacco 21, we were in 2017, I believe. And then it just happened at the legislature here recently. So, you know, it, it does take some time. Um, so if we, if we would like this to be, you know, a local regulation in this year, um, you know, we'd probably be ahead of the curve, uh, for a couple of years of something happening at the state level.
You know, I felt like when we did the Tobacco 21, uh, public hearing, that I got, I, I became so much more well-educated as, both in preparation for that public hearing and during the public hearing by all the concerned, uh, folks, uh, retailers on the one side, public health people on the other side. And it allowed us to make a really solid decision, I think, on Tobacco 21. And I'm just wondering what our colleagues think about doing that, using that same sort of vehicle, that same process of scheduling this for a public hearing. And maybe getting out, uh, about a month instead of just a couple of weeks. So that people have time on both sides of the issue to gear up for it and, and then come to Edina City Hall to talk about it with us.
Well, it'll be about two months if we put it out.
Two months out?
Because we don't have a first meeting in July. So once we get past the 16th, it'll be the 21st of July or something like that.
Yeah, that's right.
So, uh, Manager Neil had his hand up.
No, no, I was just going to affirm, uh, Councilmember Staunton, that's right. So if we don't do it in two weeks, uh, it's going to be in four weeks or six weeks, however you want to count it, but we've got a gap there. That, maybe that's okay. Maybe that's what you want.
Member Staunton or Member Brindle, any thoughts that you want to share?
I, I guess, I don't see a reason for a public hearing. I don't think we're going to hear anything different than we're hearing currently with people sending in their, their comments. If you wanted to, um, if you wanted to, um, push it back or table it till the 16th and give people till June 16th to send in their opinions, um, I, I think that'd be fine. Uh, but clearly the industry knew about it for a while because of the statutory requirement that they be told, that far in advance of our consideration of this. So, um, I think, I think we're hearing what we're going to hear. I, I don't think a public hearing is going to give us anything more than we already have.
Member Staunton, how about this due process issue? And, and if it was the 16th, uh, that would be fine with me. I'm just concerned about adequate due process on the issue.
Well, I don't, I don't see it as a due process issue. I'm, I'm with Member Brindle on this. I don't think we need a whole lot more. You know, we could do a first reading tonight, a second reading on the 16th, and that would help people to submit more information if they wanted to in between.
True.
You know, the staff reports have a lot of, um, literature that's cited and information and it's well thought out, well researched. I'm, I'm ready to proceed, but I won't fall on my sword over it.
Member Fisher, does help at all? You need to come off mute, Member Fisher. You're on mute.
Ah, got caught. I think, um,
You, you did look, uh, you were kind of pontificating and talking. Yeah. We just couldn't share it. We couldn't share the wisdom.
So, you know, last, on the Tobacco 21, you know, people had the ability to come in and we had conversation. I think, you know, I'm, I'm thinking back, just even in this meeting, it's, it's difficult, right? It's difficult to have a public hearing. And we have to figure out ways to do that. I think in this case, I do agree with, uh, Councilmember Brindle and Staunton that if we're going to, you know, bring this up at a, at a future meeting and, and whether it's the 16th of July or, or the next one in June, um, you know, we give people an opportunity to submit, um, their, their thoughts. And we do it that way, rather than trying to do, again, we don't know how long we're going to be doing this remote sort of meeting, but, uh, it's pretty difficult, um, to, and it'll be very lengthy to kind of go through that process where we can get all the information we need. We could review it ahead of the meeting and then make the best decision at that time. I'd be comfortable with that.
All right. Member Anderson, what are your?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with it as well. Um, I, it's the due process, uh, aspect of it that, um, it's just a question mark with anything else. Um, so if it's a first reading tonight and then we accumulate, uh, information, opinions and, and, uh, vote on it on the, on the 16th, it seems like, uh, it seems like a good solution.
Does the, um, and I don't know if, uh, Member Staunton has looked at the definition of flavored tobacco product here. But, uh, Administrator Brown, does the definition cover all the various, uh, flavored tobacco products that the commission is analyzing and include dealing with all the vaping products?
Yes, it, uh, it, it, it is covering that, that whole gamut.
Okay.
So I have a question.
Yes, Member Brindle, please.
Manager Neil, um, so a couple of the letters that came in talked about you want to prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco, but your liquor stores sell flavored liquor. And so is that a conflict for us?
No, I don't think that's a conflict for us. Um,
I, I, you know, are they, are they just grabbing at straws or?
I, I think, I would, yes, I think so. Uh, our, the, the products that we sell in our liquor stores, uh, when used as directed, are not, uh, going to kill you. They are not, they are not unhealthy when used as directed. And that is the very purpose of the, of the products you're, you're thinking about, uh, banning or regulating tonight. That's what I would say. It's a pretty key difference.
Okay, thank you.
The staff report was pretty compelling and, and the information, uh, that's come out tonight in this meeting, you know, where Member Fisher was pointing out, well, gee, we've been hearing from the people that, uh, want to continue to be able to sell these products, uh, for quite a few weeks. And so that is, uh, somewhat comforting from a process standpoint, I think. It sounds like, uh, my colleagues are comfortable with, uh, addressing this matter on a first reading basis tonight. We've got, uh, then an open matter for a couple of weeks. We take it up again on the 16th of June for, for a final reading. And it gives us a chance in that gap period of two weeks to look at further information, uh, before we make a final decision. So, um, is that, is that seem to be the general sentiment of council members?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance, ordinance number 2020-08, amending Chapter 12 of Edina City Code concerning tobacco and granting first reading.
Second. All right, we've got a motion to adopt ordinance number 2020-08, amending Chapter 12 of the Edina City Code concerning tobacco and, uh, tobacco flavored products, uh, and granting first reading. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher? We lost Member Fisher. Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye.
How do we handle this situation where, um, one of our council members loses, uh, his connection in a period like this, right during a vote?
Yeah, I, I, my advice to you would be to handle it just as if, um, they had to step out of the council chambers or off the dais for a moment. You, it's a little different in that you don't know if they're coming back right away. Uh, but I would say you should keep moving forward in, uh, to the extent that we can.
I did hear a bark. I didn't think that was Member Fisher voting aye.
Well, that was my dog.
And, uh, and Attorney Knudsen?
I agree with, uh, the city manager. You have enough votes to pass it, so.
All right, motion passes. The matter is, uh, approved on a first reading basis. That's ordinance 2020-08, and it will be, uh, continued then to the June 16th meeting for, uh, potential final or second reading and final approval. All right, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
We're on to Resolution 2020-52, which is the, uh, matter we previously discussed. Preliminary plat with variances at 7413 and 7425 York Terrace for Blaz Razul. Mr. Razul's been patiently waiting on the, on the Zoom call here. And, um, I think Director Teague has this matter. Director Teague, are you with Member Fisher somewhere?
Oh, can, can you see my screen? Can you hear me?
It's, uh, all we're seeing is a black screen so far.
Oh, I apologize here. Well, um, I'll stop sharing. I was just going to show you a couple of,
Let me just ask, uh, Director Teague, before you proceed, uh, Scott Denfeld, can you hear me? Our host, Scott? Have you had a chance to have any, uh, conversation with Member Fisher?
No, but I will keep checking and see if he could, he's able to call in. Cause maybe he can just call in on the, the phone number that doesn't require a connection. So let me check with him.
All right, thank you. Your point, Member Staunton, I think the bandwidth, uh, most, he's got too many kids at home. All right, um, uh, Director Teague, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Members of,
Mr. Razul, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Sorry to interrupt, Director Teague.
Yes, I was going to just quickly show you a couple of, of slides, um, to reintroduce you to the project. But this is the subdivision that you considered a couple of weeks ago on York Terrace. It's just south of the YMCA and east of, uh, the, the, uh, Yorkdale Townhomes. Uh, Mr. Razul is proposing to, he has two lots there and combine them into three. And he, you recall, there was a staff recommendation to slightly adjust those lot lines. Mr. Razul is agreeable to those. Uh, staff is recommending approval of the subdivision and the variances subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in that resolution. And the planning commission, on a vote of six to one, recommended approval as well. As mentioned, Mr. Razul is here and myself to answer any questions you might have.
Any follow-on questions that have, uh, come to the minds of council members, uh, in the interim period since we first heard this matter a couple of weeks ago? Either for Director Teague or Mr. Razul? All right, um, the, uh, action that we need to take, as Director Teague stated, is in Resolution 2020-52, which would approve the preliminary plat with variances at 7413 and 7425 York Terrace. Uh, is there a council member who cares to make that, uh, motion to adopt that resolution?
Some.
Second.
Moved by, uh, Member Anderson, second by, was it Member Fisher? Member Staunton. Member Fisher, welcome to here.
Oh, there's Fisher, he's back.
He's quick to get something in.
Did you avoid voting on flavored tobacco by just?
It was too controversial for me.
All right, we got a motion by, uh, Member Anderson, second by Member Staunton with respect to Resolution 2020-52. Uh, any further discussion? Uh, roll call, please, Ms. Ellison.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh. Yep. There she is. Roll call, please, Ms. Ellison.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, yes. Sorry about that. Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher, who is?
He's here.
There you are. Mayor Hovland?
Aye.
Aye. Member Staunton? You need to vote for Member Staunton.
There we go. We've got it.
All right. All right, uh, we've got a unanimous approval on Resolution 2020-52, which approves the preliminary plat with variances at 7413 and 7425 York Terrace. Congratulations, Mr. Razul. Good luck with your project and your new home for your family.
Yes, I have a couple of words. Yes, uh, Mayor Hovland, uh, dear council members, I would like to say huge thank you very much. It was the right decision. We are a family to stay here on our street. We want to, uh, bring our community. We want to develop, we want to make this place better. So thank you very much. And additional thank you goes to, uh, Mr. Kerry Teague for educating and working with community as, you know, as a strong leader. So thank you very much all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Razul. And you, you don't have to stay around. You can excuse yourself now.
Sure. We'll celebrate.
All right, thank you. Let, let us know where you're going to do that. Member Fisher may want to join you. Um, all right, we got a sketch plan review tonight. It's, uh, 455 Valley View Road. And, um, Director Teague, you want to introduce the topic, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Members of council. This property is, it's the old New Horizon Daycare in the Valley View and Wooddale area. What they're proposing to do here is tear down that existing building and build a three-story, 21-unit apartment. What they would need here is a conditional use permit. They would, um, or a rezoning to PUD. Um, the, the zoning ordinance has a maximum height of two stories and 24 feet, but the small area plan for this area talks about four stories for this site. So they, they would need a variance, um, but the height is consistent with the comprehensive. And there also would be a, um, flexibility with the front yard setback requested as well. Michael Margulies is here this evening. He's representing the property owners and is going to make a quick introduction. And then Dean DeVolus will present the plan. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Margulies.
All right, Mr. Margulies, all company and, uh, Mr. DeVolus too.
Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm Michael Margulies. I am engaged by DJR Architecture and Abdo Market House, LLC, Marketplace, LLC. Present a 21-unit, uh, apartment, uh, building at, uh, 4425 Valley View. Um, the project that, uh, we'll present tonight, uh, we're proud of because we think, The project that we'll present tonight, we're proud of because we think it's a good addition to the neighborhood. It's one that adheres to the small area plan and, I think, continues the philosophies and the theories of the, of the plan. In particular, we're particularly proud of having the parking all underneath the building so that we're not disturbing the neighborhood with residential or guest parking. We did hold a virtual community neighborhood meeting on May thirteenth. Virtual meetings were interesting, but we had good attendance, and a recorded version of that has been submitted to the city. All of the comments to the project were very favorable. Generally, the, the top comments were the people liked the design of the, of the project. They particularly liked the fact that the parking was underneath the building, and we had three or four comments in particular about the fact of how well this project adhered to the small area plan. With that, I'm going to turn this over to Dean DeVolus to walk through the architecture of the plan. Kerry, do you have a, are you able to call up the presentation materials, or do you want that from me?
You would have to call that up yourself.
I can do that, if you'll let me have the screen. Is it up? Is it on the screen?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. And, Mayor, Council, I assume you can hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect. Good evening, nice seeing everyone again. I'm gonna give you a quick walkthrough of the project. The first sheet you see is the site plan, and the importance of this document is really two things. All the trees that are shaded and green are the trees that we are preserving. The trees you see in orange are the trees that we're gonna remove. The reason why we're asking for one of our variances, we have moved the building closer to Valley View to can maintain that cholera trees that you see to the west, south, and east of the property. So, that really maintains having no visual effect from the wetlands behind, from the houses at the rear of it. Another thing, we're working with the owner to the east to have one common driveway with the idea of reducing amount of asphalt and maintaining a sort of clean circulation between the two buildings as opposed to having a double driveway and having to eliminate more trees. And the other aspect you see is that we set up the units on the front of the building as north side as a townhouse or individual entry unit. So, the idea that each unit will have a front port, a front patio in connection of the street so that the idea that the building has more of the residential townhouse look to it, and those main floor units have direct access to the Valley View, so it gives a bit of a native feeling, plus another factor of the units, they're big favorites among dog lovers, really wanna be, have the idea of taking the dog for me to walk without having traverse any corridors or elevators. As Michael mentioned, all our parking is underground, so the idea, with the idea that we preserve the site, we're at a two to one ratio, so we're keeping the, plenty of parking so we have absolutely no fill over it. It's a three-story building, and that basis, this document shows the higher detail of landscaping that's gonna go beyond the tree preservation, which we're planning on a whole variety of energy printers with the idea of all ground cover. So, this building will feature very little lawn, but all extensive landscape, so the idea that greenery runs up and tucks right up to the building and ties into it. So, this shows that higher level of detail of landscape that we're gonna work within the building, to really nestle it within the site. Michael, next sheet, please. Here are the floor plans, and you can see pretty clearly the parking garage underneath, and then the various replacements are larger units. These are meant to be long-term rentals or what I call legacy units, you need, say your standard year lease. People have the option to do five-year, even ten-year, so it, the ability that can have a long-term permanent to their home. There'll also be a small roof deck that'll be located in the west edge of the building and the center of the roof that could be sunning and that effect. And then you notice on the main floor plan where you see the individual patios and individual entries that relate off of Valley View. And these units will be a little bit more larger than normal to really integrate within, to really provide more of a long-term home type environment. Next sheet, please. Thank you. This just gives the basic data. You can see our parking's two to one, the number of units, square footage, but the key thing we talk about is to put the cover of the small area plan, because that really is what we use to guide design of the building, and that was the principles that we took the design off of and worked from. And this is one of, I, I give credit to the neighborhood, this was a well-organized, well-developed small neighborhood plan, so it made it a delight for us to work with it. And that's sort of been the guidance of the building, and as a result, we had a very successful community meeting because the neighborhood was very appreciative that we adopted the plan and worked within its tenets to create the building. Next sheet, please. And then here's two views. This is a view looking towards the west. The one thing I wanna note on this is the sidewalk. Normally, Dyna requires a boulevard sidewalk, but the building to our west, which is the Petersons, the apartments that are east, the sidewalk is directly attached to the curb, and it's relatively new. So, I know public works like the boulevard, but our recommendation would be, in this case, because the two existing buildings, the outside, have a non-boulevard effect, we'd like to keep it, otherwise it sort of seems unusual, the thought of go along, jump in, and go back out again. Judging from the age of Valley View, there's not gonna be a psychic replacement there for many years. So, that's our preference for architectural and design consistency. The exterior of the building, you can see the patios, you can see the effect. If you wanna see building that's similar to this, there's a building that we did at Fifty-first and Ewing, which is a three-story building, sixteen units, but similar concept, but it had a, the idea of doing some brick base to anchor it, we'll probably pick a brick, they'll be somewhat similar to the Petersons' building, so the, yeah, some architectural continuity, then the upper part will be wood siding, painted with detail on that, and then the bays in and out, again, like we do, did it in retrospect, give it a rhythm and a scale, and emphasize the individual entries of those main four units that attach directly to the street. So, it, you know, in our opinion, it's a nice infill project that is a good replacement for the daycare, which, you know, has moved across the street. So, that concludes my, our presentation, and we stand for questions, so thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. DeVolus, and questions from council members? Comments about the sketch plan? Member Anderson, do you wanna lead us off?
Yeah, good, thank you. Sorry, I was on mute there. Well, I, I, you know, to me, the look of the building from the street is great, and I don't think it's too much building for the area. The, the, the setback requests, well, one of the things that we do with the, especially what I, what I'll call the front yard setback, it just, that's where we miss the boulevard. I mean, that's, that's, that's the piece there that we sacrificed. But the parking, I appreciate. Is there additional parking, guest parking? Could you explain that to me just a little bit?
There'll be a couple places, a couple spaces along the, yeah, the driveway leading into the project, but, and then there'll be a couple additional places in the garage that the guests can be given a code. So, we're gonna keep that space, finalize a couple spots in the building. So, the idea, again, we really wanted to make this a building which minimized any type of surface parking.
Sure. So, how many guest spaces are underground? Two?
We're parked above city ordinance. We're at two bases per unit, so in effect, we could easily provide four to six guest spaces within the building, if not more, plus we have the parking along Valley View.
Uh-huh. Okay.
We're well-parked internally, and then just the park on the street that we will not have an issue on providing parking for guests and residents.
Uh-huh. Okay. So, again, I'm just trying to, maybe I didn't pick that up. How many guest parking spaces are underground?
So, right now, we have, we have, we're probably gonna provide six as a preliminary basis on that.
Six underground?
Correct.
Okay, good. And then there's a couple in the driveway, and then a pinch on the street.
Correct.
Okay, good, thank you. Although, those are my questions. Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
Good, thanks, Member Anderson. Member Brindle, any comment for these folks? Your observations at this, at this point in time?
Um, I think this is a good use of this property. I like what I see. So, the, you know, the, if I get really picky, I can say I don't like the balconies that look like they are, oh, I don't even want to say, where they've got that diagonal connector to the building. These, these balconies look like they are part of the building, so in looking at that, it, that looks fine. No, generally, I like what I see, and it's a, it's a good use for this property. I think, I think it's, and I love the fact that the small area plan gave enough guidance that you could design something and comply with it. Are there, is there a need for a variance of any kind on here?
The front yard. Now, now, here's the trick. The small area plan follows the guideline, but your zoning is the old zoning. So, the small area plan differs from the zoning. I assume once your comprehensive plan's adapted, the zoning will allow, align with the smaller area plan.
Right.
Variance is because we're going under the old zoning ordinance on it. But the one variance that is most important to us is the front yard, because by scooting the building a little bit further north, we can preserve all the trees.
Right.
At the rear of the property.
What, yeah, what is the current setback?
Michael, do you remember the exact numbers? It's on the data sheet.
The, uh, council member Brindle, uh, council members, the front setback is thirty-five feet, and we are asking that we have a variance to sixteen feet.
So, what's, what's the slope in the back of the building?
So, the back drops off, as you know.
Yeah.
It's up where it's level if we drop, if we, it drops off deeply to that wetland, so we really wanted to stay out of that, those steep grades, and those steep grades also contain the cholera trees I'm making reference to. And you can see where we are in relationship to the Emmy Peterson Building. We're not too far in front of them, and our setback is further than the condominium that's built directly to our north. So, we felt it was in scale with the surrounding properties.
Okay. All right. I, that's kind of what I figured. I, I'm, I'm not sure you could put it much farther back than you've got it, so. All right, well, I, I really don't have a lot of questions. I like it a lot. So, I, you know, I mean, my, my typical things are, where, where's the trash pickup gonna be? Is it inside the building? Is it outside the building? And then, and then how you're gonna handle bicycles and where you're gonna provide for bicycle storage?
And that'll be inside the building, same with trash, on that basis. And then it'll be a movable dumpster, which, when the truck backs in, they'll roll out of the garage and then tuck it back in. But that's all planned to be within the building.
Okay, so the truck isn't gonna have to go in the building?
No, no, not at all.
All right. Okay, that, that's really all I have. I like it.
Thank you.
Good, thank you, Member Brindle. Member Fisher?
I, actually, this slide that's up right now is helpful. So, from the parking level, is the parking level open to the rear, or are you having to mechanically ventilate it?
We're gonna mechanically ventilate it.
And you can make that all work?
Yeah. Because the, is the idea, I mean, there'll be, yeah, the idea is we want an enclosed garage. There's no reason to have it open for light control and all the aspects. It really keeps at least the bases of the building dark.
Right.
And only light that'll be in the rear would be the unit lights themselves, because the garage lights tend to be a little more harsh for safety, they gotta be a lot brighter. So, the idea is that we can keep that garage enclosed, it makes for, like, it reduces light pollution.
Sure. I mean, I don't really have, I, I like the project, I like the scale of it, I like the, how it addresses the street, especially the, the sort of townhouse-style patio units along the sidewalk will make it much more of a neighborhood feel. There's a lot of really good stuff happening here. I was, I'm not, I'm not as, not concerned about the front yard setback because it appears, and I didn't quite catch what you said, how it relates to the buildings on each side, but it's, it looks graphically like not a huge difference there?
Exactly, and that's what we started basing on. I looked at the Peterson Building to our west, and I looked at the new condominium to our north, and we were, we were further away than the condominium and a little bit closer in, than the Emmy Peterson Building, so we thought this was about right. It'll look consistent with the other buildings that are in the neighborhood.
Right. Yeah, so I think, you know, the lesson we've sort of learned is that, you know, we can like a sketch plan and then not even be, we get excited about it, not think about what the neighbors might not like and how that, you know, where is that conversation really gonna be going? And I don't, I don't see any of the potential variance issues here being that big of an issue. So, I, you know, I like it as a concept.
Thank you. And we did have the neighborhood meeting before sketch plan, so that was helpful, so they were, we were able to get their feedback in front of actually going to council.
I appreciate that.
And then, Member Stotin?
Maybe a question for Kerry before I give my comments. Kerry, do we anticipate that we'll change the zoning to match the four-story height?
We probably should in this district, because all of the commercial properties have that, that two-story maximum, so, so that might be a good idea.
Consistent with the, the Wooddale Valley View Small Area Plan. So, that may make it so that by the time it comes to us, or that it may be not even a variance on the height?
Potentially, depending on their timing. I get the impression they're wanting to move forward probably quicker than, the planning commission is considering a number of other variance or code changes right now. We could add this to it. This probably will be in advance of it.
Yeah, either way, it's at least consistent with the comprehensive plan. Yeah, I don't have a lot to add. It seems like a good, it seems like the right use. It fits in nicely. There's a nice vibe in this neighborhood, and having smaller residents there would be a good thing. I assume if you've got twenty units here, that you'll be making a couple of them affordable. And, you know, it'll be, I think, a nice addition. I'm, I would echo, um, council member Fisher's caution. We're, we're learning that sometimes there's issues that are neighborhood-specific that we don't see as well as the neighbors do, so we'll wait to hear what they have to say at the public hearing, but, but I like the project in general. I like the stoops on the street. I like the underground parking. It seems like a nice addition.
My observations are all positive in, in nature as well. You know, when we worked on the Dyna Flats, what we cared most about was that they were in compliance with the- you know, when we worked on the Edina flats, what we cared most about was that they were in compliance with the Small Area Plan and that's the guiding document that you've used in doing the work that you're doing here. And, um, I, I think it's a terrific potential addition to the neighborhood and it just leads to this transformation of that little corner that's just extraordinary in my mind. And it would, if, if this eventually gets approved in some form, it'll just leave that one little piece that buries it untouched. Uh, and it's just a wonderful little, uh, part of our community, uh, as a neighborhood node. Uh, I would have liked to have seen a south elevation and a west elevation, but I guess that'll come in due time. Can you talk a little, little bit about the materials that you want to use here? I can see, uh, stone and, and metal and maybe stucco. I just don't want it to be ephesus. What do you think about?
It's, it's, uh, brick at the base.
Okay.
Lap siding at the upper portion of the building.
Oh, lap siding, okay.
But does not have, it's, it's not, uh, ephesus at all. In the building.
Okay.
Of wood and brick. And like I say, if you want to see a building similar scale, someone makes, there's a building, uh, right behind a Rizzo on Fifty-Fifty First and Ewing that we just completed. It's just got occupancy.
That's got a very nice feel to it, that building. I thought it was a terrific little addition to the neighborhood.
No, thank you. And this will have that. And this is sort of in that same genre. That was sixteen units. This is twenty-one units. So they're similar in scale.
Okay. All right, um, see what else was I thinking about? Uh, they, uh, I joined Member Fisher in saying I'm not off-put by the proximity to the street. I think, uh, pulling it towards Valley View, uh, creates more intimacy in a way. And I think with the vegetation that you've got there, uh, the people sitting, I can see people sitting out in their front patios and, and the foot traffic, people engaging with each other in a neighborly way, I think it really is. Uh, it was a good way to do it to preserve the, the tree growth in the back. So, uh, that Member Brindle's comment was interesting too. Um, none of those support elements for the, for the, um, uh, balconies done in a first-rate way. Really a terrific looking project so far. Uh, always a cautionary note of we'll have to wait until we see what the neighbors have to say about some issues that we don't recognize as both Member Fisher and Member Sutton cautioned. Um, but it really off to a fabulous start, I think, on a potential improvement for that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, good. Um, I think that completes that matter. Anybody else have anything further they want to say for sketch plan? All right. Thank you, Mr. DeVos, Mr. Margulies. Yeah, you can exit as you please.
What's that?
You can exit as you please.
Oh, I'm glad. I'm glad, too.
All right, it looks like, uh, you haven't found a place to get a haircut yet, but, uh, Mr. Margulies, he got, he got one somewhere.
Uh, it's a function of age, Mayor.
He's a little more, he's a little more refined than me.
Yeah.
I've been letting it for a while until, yeah, fear of necessity.
All right. Good to see both of you, uh, gentlemen.
Likewise, thank you.
All right, thank you. Figure out a solution too for that seventy-two-hundred, seventy-two-fifty there, Mr. DeVos.
Still cooking it.
All right, keep working on it.
Didn't work it, cooking it, thank you.
All right, we're on to, uh, correspondence petitions. I imagine what we had in our packets, what we had electronically, uh, nothing new has come in. Is that right, Mr. Ellis or Manager Neil?
That is correct.
All right, aviation noise update, Member Brindle?
Thank you. Uh, there was a noise oversight committee meeting last Wednesday. And, um, uh, so the situation at the airport is, uh, is, is very different than, uh, than it was at the beginning of March. Uh, Delta Airlines, uh, there's a representative from Delta on the NAC and Delta thinks that they might be back running close to what they were in about three years. So it's gonna be a long time. That, that feels to me like a long time. And if that reflects, um, uh, how the economy is going to get us there, that's a scary thought. So that was, uh, that kind of put me back on my heels to hear that. But, uh, we talked about, uh, noise, uh, to the east of the airport. Um, there's, there, there's a lot of residential development going on in Mendota Heights and Inver Grove Heights. And these are big fancy million-dollar homes, uh, and multimillion-dollar homes that are going in in these river bluff areas. And, um, and so, you know, they, they come in and they buy this piece of property. It's beautiful. And then all of a sudden, the airplane noise, the, the departures and the arrivals are going right over their brand-new house. And so, um, the, the MAC has, has a working relationship with these cities to the east. And, um, and it's a, it's a real, it's, it's a real challenge to, um, preserve enough land as what the MAC calls compatible. You want most of the noise to go over compatible space, which is industrial, it's river, and it's not developable. And, um, and there's less and less of that not developable space as people get creative about where to put their new house. But, um, but generally, um, things are, things are kind of quiet from a noise oversight perspective. We hear some airplanes going over Edina, but certainly not to the degree that we heard them before. Um, the, um, the decommissioning of the beacons around the country, uh, that's been delayed. That project was to, uh, the, for instance, this beacon at, uh, at our airport was gonna be, um, decommissioned and removed in twenty-twenty-two. And now they're thinking at the earliest it'll be twenty-twenty-three. So the pandemic really has changed all sorts of, of projects that are going on around the airport. What is interesting, um, and there's, it's all speculation at this point. But when that beacon goes away, it means that the, the airplanes are gonna be flying via GPS. So it'll be next gen. It'll be RNAV that we were very critical of in the beginning. Uh, now we've learned more about it. We're more circumspect, but yet accepting of it. More accepting than we were. Um, but the flight patterns are gonna be different than they are today. So it's hard to even know what we're gonna be, uh, concerned about at that point. But, um, but we'll see. There's, there, there are a lot, uh, lots of things up in the air, so to speak. Uh, but, uh, but generally the airport is running well. Um, it is not a busy place by any means at this point. So when you fly out, you get right through, uh, all the lines. Um, but, um, um, but anyway, that's, that's what happened at the NAC meeting last week.
Okay, good. Manager Neil, anything else? Uh, airplane-related? Okay.
Nothing else.
Member Brindle, why don't you keep it going? Uh, go right into your comments. We'll segue that way.
All right. Uh, just a quick comment, and that is on our cul-de-sac of Paiute Drive and Paiute Pass. We had six graduations on Sunday morning and it was, it was really cool. Um, the, uh, the, the school bus came down the street. All our, all our yards were decorated. So in honor of our six graduates. And so, um, everybody got involved. And it was, it was really fun to have a community, the whole community be involved in graduation. And, um, uh, but congratulations to all the graduates of twenty-twenty. And, um, as we've heard a few times, this is a class that has, uh, has experienced some once-in-a-lifetime things that they keep, you know, uh, nine eleven was a once-in-a-lifetime happening and that happened as they were starting school. And, um, and here we are at, um, or I suppose, anyway, it ha, it happened to these kids when they were young. And now they're graduating in the midst of a pandemic. And now that, you know, the, the, the violence and unrest in our, in our Twin Cities. So it's, it's, uh, I feel for these kids. That's what I have.
Thank you, Member Brindle. Member Anderson?
Yes, yeah, I, uh, I wanted to also congratulate Member Brindle on her recent graduation. Um, her degree, I think, was received. Was that, was that on Sunday as well?
Yeah, it was. Yes, indeed.
Well, congratulations.
My GED, yes.
Um, I guess, you know, my short comment is really just in recognition to our first responders who have been working around the clock and are on call, uh, and on point. And I, I think that, um, they're doing a great job and I, I, there's a high level of stress involved for everyone at this time and, um, especially with those first responders in, in our town. So I, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Well said. Uh, Member Sutton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I've been, you know, the last eight days, the world has changed. And it was in a pretty tough place even before eight days ago. We've had this health pandemic that is, hasn't happened for a hundred years. It's caused, you know, economic dislocation that has been worse than anything since the Great Depression and perhaps even worse than that. And now, uh, now we have an unarmed black man killed in Minneapolis. And we have all of the distress that goes along with that understandably. Folks are mad as hell and they're not gonna take it anymore. And, you know, earlier in the meeting tonight, we talked about, um, centering race inequity in the COVID-nineteen response because they've been on the short end of that stick too. Both economically and from health experiences. Um, and it's a, it's a tough time in our country and I'm really worried about our place. I'm worried about our community. I'm worried about our state. I'm worried about our country. I'm worried about our world. Um, we were talking in one of our emergency meetings last week that, uh, you know, in all my time in public service, I had never had to even consult Chapter Twelve of the Minnesota statutes, which is what gives us the authority to issue emergency declarations and orders. Here in the last ten weeks, we, I participated in both here in Edina and in my day job at Excelsior, many such orders, including a stay-at-home order and, and curfews. And they've almost, we're, we're getting numb to them. They've almost become routine. And they're not routine events. These are, these are extraordinary things for our country and for our state and for our community. And I think, you know, one of my takeaways from it is that in this era we live in, there's no, there's no bubble anymore. There's no bubble for us. We don't, there's no borders. The pandemic obviously doesn't recognize any borders. It starts in China, it goes around the world. It comes to our city. It comes to our state. Um, and the reaction in response to George Floyd's death shows you how connected we are as a world. Sure, it started here, but now there's dozens of cities in the country and internationally that are basically have been catalyzed by that event to get out and start telling people that we gotta do something different. And, and it's understandable. Um, and I, I don't, I don't know what to do about it other than keep trying. I think, um, I think it's really important that we, I was reading this week a column by David Gergen, the author and former presidential advisor, and he said, um, he said, "The critical thing in a moment like this is to try and, try and remember who we are and who we can be." And I think that's something to really ponder. You know, I think in our community, I've always thought that we're a, we're an empathetic crowd and it's gonna take a lot of empathy right now. It's gonna take a lot of empathy to understand what folks are going through, who are having a tough economic times. What it's like to be a parent of a child, where you have to tell him before he goes out the door how to make sure he's safe so that he doesn't get killed. I don't have to do that with my boys. And I think there needs to be urgency. We have to, we've been talking a lot about how we make the world better and we're trying, we're all trying, but we gotta try harder and we gotta try faster. And then I think we also have to have some grace. Um, you know, before George Floyd's killing, I was thinking that we needed to have a session tonight about, um, how we're responding to the COVID-nineteen, um, pandemic. Because we've been getting a lot of comments from members of the public about, well, you're closing this, you're not closing that, et cetera. And for the most part respectful, but I think it's full of nuance. And, and I've been really an admirer of our staff for figuring out day to day to day how to, how to adjust things and, and change on the fly and be nimble. And that's what it's gonna require. We can't, as council members, be managing this other than supporting our staff and our first responders, as Councilmember Anderson said, try and give them the tools to do the best thing they can. Um, but we're, we're in a, we're in a tough time and, and I'm, you know, as I was thinking about this, I actually, I, I hearken back to, back in December of two thousand eighteen, our former colleague and, and still friend Bob Stewart, when he left the council, said some things. And I thought they, they actually struck with me when I was thinking about this tonight. He said three things in his, in his farewell remarks. He said, "Don't act out of fear. Remember that we are part of a bigger world and do the right thing." And I think those words have never been truer and we need to all just try and be our best selves. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much for those comments. Uh, Member Fisher?
So my first comment is just, uh, to thank the Edina School District. As, uh, Councilmember Brindle said, um, you know, they had a lot of tough decisions to make about how to do graduation and, and make all those things work. And, um, I thought it was wonderful. The, the, and what I thought was so wonderful about Sunday is that all of our community got to participate. Um, so in our block, we had one graduate, but we were all involved. And, uh, what a great way to involve the entire community. So just kudos to the school district. Um, I do want to make a few comments about, um, this past week and, you know, I think about, it, it's, it's so hard to even describe in words what it's been for all of us. The two words that come to mind are just profound sadness. And, you know, I'm sad for George Floyd's family and friends. I'm sad for minority communities who feel that authority figures and public servants are not working in, in their community's best interest. And I'm sad for all of the impacted communities. And when I think about the impacted communities, I wonder which communities could actually claim they're not impacted by what's happened in the last week. Um, my takeaway from this past week, because I've really thought about this, is that we no longer have the ability to ignore injustice, inequities. with our neighbors. Whether our neighbors are right next door or in that city next door or in the state next door. I don't, I mean, and Councilmember Staunton, you really nailed it. It's like this world is so connected. To think that we can just go about our lives and that everything's going to be just fine as long as the problem's not right here. The problem is right here. It's all around us. And it, and maybe it takes something this dramatic to kind of realize that. I think back a few months ago when we had some racist graffiti in our community. And we talked as a council about our tendency to be quietly disgusted by that kind of thing. You know, but, you know, it doesn't feel, you know, it's hard to talk about. So we we're disgusted, but we, we just don't make it too big of a, big of a deal. But we ultimately talked about the importance of being more vocal in that disgust. And that is, that's an important thing, I think, to send a message. At the time, I even proposed some modifications to our current process with, you know, dealing with incidents in our, in our community. And as I think about it, it was less about the fact that I thought we needed very precise, different process. I think I just needed to feel like I was not helpless, that, that there was some action that I could be part of that could make a difference. Maybe that was just a tiny thing. And, and that's, that's the overwhelming feeling I've had this past week, this helplessness, like what can I do? What should I do? And then on Sunday afternoon, there was a peaceful protest over on, I think it was Sunday afternoon, it's all kind of a blur, but on the bridge on Crosstown in France. And, and the mayor and Larray and I all went over there. And I wasn't sure what to, I'd never been to a protest. I didn't know how to protest. It's just something I've always watched in my life. And I got over there and thankfully somebody actually had materials so you could make a sign. Otherwise I would have been without anything. But what I realized in that moment is that when you spend some time and you share your thoughts and your feelings with your neighbors, it's, it's a form of taking an action when you otherwise feel helpless. And one of the profound things that I saw was there was a sign, a, a few signs that said, "White silence equals violence." And it like, it was a light bulb for me that, thinking about the quotes from Martin Luther King on silence, right? And, and it was just, it all kind of came to a head and and one of the quotes he has is, "Our lives begin to end the day we begin, we become silent about things that matter." And so this whole theme about, you know, what, what is, you know, what can you do other than just be silent? And I would say our quality of life in Edina will begin to diminish the day we become silent about things that matter. The day that we just feel like that's happening over there and we're over here, our quality of life is absolutely going to diminish. It is imperative that we as a community figure out how we can get engaged and make things better, not only here in our community, but with our neighbors and our neighboring communities, because we're all one. And, and anyone that, you know, we're stuck in our homes at night because we can't even go outside because of these things that are happening, we are involved. So my, my question, and I don't have an answer here, but I have a question for all of us, and that is, what can we do as a city? And we're, we're taking actions. We're doing things in our community, but what can we do? You know, what's our involvement to help in the rebuilding? What's our involvement in helping? I feel like there's this opportunity right now that's going to open up about how to change things systemically and in our region. And I think we need to be at the forefront in those conversations, in those actions. And I agree with Councilmember Staunton that there's an urgency to this. Because if we just let things go back and feel like, okay, we got through that and don't make change, we're going to be back here and it's going to maybe be worse. And so that's my, my plea is let's figure out a way that we can jump in and take action and be part of, you know, maybe we can help lead, you know, a regional group of cities and through the council of mayors and, and through these organizations that are already out there, ways to kind of come in and try to make things better. Oh, sorry, that was a lot of, a lot, but I just I'll share. Thanks.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Member Fisher. All of those thoughts that you're all expressing are really critically important, I think. Member Anderson started out by thanking our public safety personnel. It's been quite a trying period of time for them. As we saw on, I think particularly Friday night with a lot of fires, a lot of violence by some people, very distinct minority, I think, most people concerned about the, the deaths of George Floyd. Legitimately so concerned about the death of George Floyd. But enters first amongst all those people that had such great concern were some people that were intent on doing some bad things. And so folks in our town worried a great deal about it. And we tried to do some things about it to protect them all through the weekend when it looked like it was at its worst. In the middle of the night on Friday night, if memory serves me correctly, that was when the Governor Walz and Mayor Fry were facing up to probably over a dozen fires and and having their folks in law enforcement stretched thin as they tried to deal with people that were intent on doing some bad things. And our, our public safety people came up with ideas about how to deal with the problems if they came to our town, if there was a threat to people in our community, if there was a threat to the property in our community. And it put our personnel out on the line at night when things are most dangerous. We had a full complement of officers working hard on the east side of town to make sure that things stayed safe. We had fire personnel ready to go. We had five ambulances ready to go. We had SWAT team people if we needed them. We had emergency medical people if we needed them. We had compacts with other cities if we needed it. We had, and finally on Saturday night, I think the agreement of the National Guard after they got, helped get things quieted down a little bit in Minneapolis, thinking they had the ability to help us and others, some other first ring suburb if they needed it. Turns out we didn't need it, but we did have encounters during those evening hours that were, some of them could have been, because some of them could have been very, very difficult. So to those folks that were involved in public safety for us, the people that lead them, Dave Nelson, Tom Schmitz, all those crews, those emergency medical people, our firefighters, our police officers, we really owe them so much. Because on Friday night in particular, it looked like if there was going to be trouble, we were going to be way outmanned. But cities get together and use the resources they have together to collaborate and cooperate and to make sure things stay safe, and they did. So that's, that's something I think it was important to do, that it was to recognize all of our public safety personnel, as Member Anderson talked about. With respect to the other issues, I think that Member Staunton and Member Fisher talked about, there's, there, there is an urgency to it and there is momentum around the death of George Floyd. On Sunday, Member Fisher and I, my wife, were over on the France Avenue Bridge over the Crosstown. Many people from Edina there, many people with young families. Every, it seems like almost every car that turned off the Crosstown and made a southbound turn on France Avenue was honking their horn in recognition of this rally for George. This rally for George Floyd that lost his life unnecessarily. And it was something really important that, to do. I don't think I'd ever been to a protest either, as Member Fisher was pointing out, but I was so grateful after the fact that I had gone and stood with people that I knew and didn't know and had some conversations with them as we all stood there in our, in our masks to keep us safe from COVID and, and shared this experience of trying to say something about about George Floyd. And then the next day, we had here at City Hall, I guess I'm not at City Hall, but at City Hall, we had a group of people again gathered from Edina to also show their concerns about what had happened to Mr. Floyd. And there were many, many people from Edina there, many people that I knew. My next door neighbor was there with her two kids. Many people came up to visit with me about the concerns they had about what had happened to Mr. Floyd and where we were as a community, as a country, as a region. And then what was probably most profound on the expression of free speech happened this afternoon when I was told that there were going to be kids that were forming at the high school and walking to the community center. And I rushed to try to meet them and, and join them to walk partway, but they, they walked so fast. By the time I got over to the community center, the park, to walk back on Benton, they were already coming, nearly coming across the bridge on Benton. And they were stretched back on Benton as far as I could see. All these kids from the high school, alums from the high school, their parents, teachers, principal, everybody coming, being led by young African Americans, I think that went to Edina High School, one of them in particular, that was one of the leaders, expressed that she had grown up here and and was one of the leaders of the, of the protest and the march, if you will. But those couple of hundred kids really had some strong opinions and really had some things to say about justice in America. About the fact that Black Lives Matter too. That Black Lives Matter too. And so this is a time where we can jump off and do some work with the people in our region that I think people of a good spirit and kindness, as we've been seeing down on Lake Street, want to get engaged and do something. And so I've had people from our community writing to me asking, "Are we going to reengage the Race and Equity Task Force?" I wish Heidi Lee was still on the, on the call right now. Because there is a desire, I think, amongst people in our community to have a listening session. To have our councils schedule a listening session along with our Race and Equity Task Force. I'm sure many of those people would be willing to reconvene Jesse Kingston and James Pierce, willing to reconvene them and listen to our community members and the feelings and the thoughts that they have post the death of George Floyd and where they think we ought to be going. Should our plans on equity and the work we're doing to meet our Race and Equity goals be reassessed and maybe accelerated, to Member Staunton's point? So those are just some things I wanted the council to be thinking about in terms of, how do we, how do we take this momentum that has been created by the improper deaths, the wrongful deaths of a person in our broader community? You know, we all, the whole metro area is just a big town and we're just a neighborhood in the town. So you could really look at George as one of our neighbors that met an untimely end and should never have had happened to him what happened to him. So what are we going to do about it? What are we going to do? What are we going to, how are we going to stand up as a community? How are we going to stand up as a region? How are we going to stand up as a big town in this metropolitan area and say, "This can't happen. What are we going to do to reform things?" So I'd, I'd like to have us figure out, I know it's not the easiest thing to be trying to figure out what's next. But this reengagement of Equity Task Force, this listening to community members, they may be one way for us to start. But I don't want to admire the problem too long as we tend to do in Minnesota. I think I want to get moving on this and keep moving as a community and as a region towards making sure that we address some of these issues and try to figure out how we can deal with this systemic problem that's centuries old now, of thinking that some people aren't, don't have the same sort of value as all the rest of us. Because it's simply not true. So we think about the fact that Black Lives Matter too. So give that some thought, colleagues, and we'll figure out where to go from here. I know we'll have some good thoughts from all of you on it. Manager Neil, move on to you and for your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. I won't repeat the, the comments that you shared about the public safety staff from this past past week and because they're right on the money. And I appreciate that recognition of their work. I do want to bring some attention though to four other people that were also engaged in, throughout the week and throughout the weekend. Every time we call a emergency city council meeting, that often starts with a call from, from one of you to me and then from me to Jennifer Garsky and then from Jennifer Garsky to Sharon Allison and then from Sharon Allison to Jennifer Bennerott and also Lisa Schaefer gets involved in that. So there's a, there's a, there's a tight core group and mostly involving those four people that are really critical to just the, the mechanics of getting you all involved in, in together in this format so that we can make very important decisions for the community. So I want to recognize them for their contributions as well. Because doing it, making a decision is important, getting it out into the public and informing our residents is, is also very important too. So those are, those are worthy of recognition as well. The other thing I will tell you is that there was a, there was a plan this evening to share with you some, some planning and some fiscal recommendations with regards to our recreation enterprises. Those, those were changed. There's substantial change going on, not just in the world and and the kind of priorities that we've been working on, but from the governor's office with regards to the pandemic. Since we told you that, we, since we targeted this night as the night where we're going to have that, that subject matter discussed, there were some pretty significant changes in how we can manage our recreation enterprises. So we really had to go back to zero on some of those and start over with, with additional scenarios. We think that we're probably at a stable spot right now for a while with regards to ice arenas and swimming pools and golf courses and so forth. So we are kind of reconstructing those, that fiscal story and we're planning to deliver that to you next week, or excuse me, in two weeks at a long time where you're going to have the joint, a joint meeting with the Park and Recreation Commission. So that'll be a a good evening to, to do that and share that kind of fiscal information with both the council and the commission. And that's all I've got for you tonight.
Thank you. Any other comments from council members? Follow on? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, and remember you've got a closed session tonight immediately following this.
Is that on the same channel or do we go to a different?
Jennifer, are you on the line? Do you?
You put a different invitation.
You do. Everybody's, we're all going to go offline and you're going to come on, you're going to, you've got a different invitation. You got a separate invitation to a new meeting immediately following this one.
That's right. So leave this meeting and join that one.
And did that come from Scott or Jennifer?
Scott Denfeld.
Okay.
All right. And so for this problem, what do they do? Who do we, who do we call?
Any of us. Officially, will this smash any previous record for number of council meetings in one seven day span?
Yes, it will.
I think it will.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Did we get a motion to adjourn? I can't remember.
I, I move adjournment.
Second by Member Fisher. Discussion. Roll call please on adjournment.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brendel?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye.
End adjourn. I'll see you momentarily.
See you in a bit.
See you in a bit.